Good evening. I will get us going here at this, thank you, that audio is sufficient. This meeting of the working session committee. Ashen, if you are willing to go ahead with the role, please.
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hatch.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Light. Commissioner Matjeski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
Thank you. Believe Commissioner Robbie is moments away, so we eagerly await him. We'll move now to any public participation. You have a minute to address us at the working session. Is there anyone here in person that would like to address us at public participation? Seeing none, Ashley, is there anyone online?
Yes, Chair. First, we have Gary Muntz.
Good evening. I would like to take a moment this evening to lend my support to the establishment of a collaborative and inclusive planning process for the distribution of the older person's millage dollars. As our community continues to evolve, it's essential that we ensure transparency, equitable access, and the meaningful involvement of all stakeholders in the allocation of resources that directly impact our senior population. By engaging with the sources such as the Commission on Aging, drawing on the expertise and knowledge of local aging service providers, current funders of aging services, and community organizations, we can create a more effective and responsive framework for the distributing of millage funds. I think that such a process will help ensure that the funds are allocated in a manner that addresses the diverse needs of seniors, with a particular focus on the underserved populations and the areas of greatest needs. Of equal importance, I think the process will also foster clear guidelines and accountability, establishing criteria and reviewing mechanisms to.
Your time is up. We're limited to one minute at working. We do have another opportunity for three minutes at our full board meeting immediately after this meeting. Thank you. Ashley, anyone else?
Next, we have Joanne McCollum.
Hello, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I am Joanne McCollum, Washtenaw County Road Commissioner. I just want to say thank you to the county commissioners for coming out in this very cold chilly day and just working hard for our community. So, thank you very much. That's my comment.
Thank you. Ashley, anyone else?
Yes, next we have Kat Leighton.
Hi, I'm Kat Leighton, Ypsilanti city resident. Just want to say thank you to the commissioners who are helping providing some hotel stays for some folks out in Ypsilanti, albeit that process could be better and created with infrastructure, so it's a little bit more sustainable. However, we really appreciate it since it's very cold outside and I'm looking at this shelter, you know, preliminary numbers and seventy-two percent of folks are disabled and over seven hundred and ninety people are served. We have a huge unhoused homelessness issue in Ypsilanti. We really need a shelter there. So, thanks to all those who have been helping out with those conversations to carry that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, anyone else who on public comment?
Yes, Chair. Next, we have Anna Peckrell.
Hello, this is Anna Peckrell. I'm the Executive Director of Dexter Senior Center. I wanted to echo the points that Gary Muntz brought up about letting the organizations, the stakeholders who will be involved in this millage have some type of input in how they believe it should be spent and how it should be allocated. I am very excited to hear what plans the commissioners have in mind so far, but I do know that in my experience, I am getting a lot of messages from other people in the senior community just really trying to find updates on what's going on. And they're having a hard time understanding what the timeline is, which I know this meeting will address some of that. But I'm excited for this process to be more open and more open to the public and those who will be benefiting from it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ashley, anyone else online?
Yes, Chair. So, there is someone on here who's just titled iPhone, but they have their hand raised. Could you please identify yourself? Let us know your name.
Hello, this is Barbara Nice May from Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. I apologize. I didn't have myself identified.
Great.
Go ahead.
Hello, this is Barbara Nice May from Ypsilanti Meals on Wheels. Thank you all for coming together tonight to talk about this very important issue, among other things. And I wanted to echo what my two colleagues said about the need for the millage dollars to be going into the community and to meet the needs in the community. I remember that there was a presentation last fall and there's been lots of conversations with, I know, the Commission on Aging and others about perhaps not having the full office on aging and maybe thinking about how else it could be housed in the county. Happy to offer more thoughts on that, but mostly just want to say this is exciting that we're even talking about it and can't wait to hear how we're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, anyone else?
That is it, Chair.
Great. We'll move then to the report for the county administrator. No report this evening? Great. Ashley, any report under the liaison's report?
Yes, Chair, just a very quick one. Commissioners, later on the agenda, you're going to see a resolution to amend your 2025 calendar. Just wanted to let you all know, this would be an amendment to add a special working session on Friday, February seventh, which would serve as the board's priority retreat. If you have any questions, happy to answer it, but I do hope that you all, if you have any questions, let me know. And if you have any questions about the policy retreat, happy to answer them.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll move then to our discussion items. One, I want to thank both Shona Teruza and Dan Kelly for being with us here tonight. Shona is with us virtually, and that is because she has a six o'clock meeting of the Alpha House Board of Directors. And so, I'd like to turn it over to her and then to Dan to give us a bit of a sheltering update, and then we'll take questions after that as commissioners see fit.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, commissioners and everyone else in the room. Just to give you some context, Alpha House has been in existence for thirty years. And in those thirty years, we've typically served six families at a time in our shelter. And so, this is our very first year of doing the Weather Amnesty Program, and it's also our first year of our new expansion. And so, to describe the expansion project briefly, the Annaba Housing Commission very generously gave us the use of a building in North Ashley. And we moved out of our offices in early 2024. And we shared that building with the Delana Salk staff. We did this so that we could convert our offices into additional bedrooms because six was just not enough. And so, the whole of last year, we were working on renovating the bedrooms and adding new bathrooms and just lots of different accessibility upgrades. And we ended up only completing that work the week before Christmas, but that has allowed us to now accommodate fourteen families at a time of different configurations because the rooms are all different sizes. But most importantly, on November the thirteenth, we launched our Weather Amnesty Program. And so, thanks to the funding that you all provided us through the winter shelter money, we were able to hire four additional staff and take on three social work interns and then open our doors to additional families. And it took about a week and then they all started coming, as you might expect, because the need is great. People find their way to us either through a HAWK referral. Some have come through McKinney-Vento and our Public Schools Liaison. Some have come through other partner agencies and some have just done a Google search and found their way to us. They could either drop in, just show up at Alpha House, or they could call ahead. We used some of that winter shelter money to buy a whole bunch of camp beds. I think we bought fifty in total and brand-new bedding and all sorts of supplies. And so, over the past two months, we've served a total of thirty-five Weather Amnesty families. Some drop in and may stay a night, two, three nights, and then they figure out their situation and then move on. But we've had some that have stuck around for a month or more just because they have nowhere else to go. Last night, we ended up hosting seventy-three individuals under our roof. And to go back to the context, this is up from twenty to twenty-three per night, probably this time last year. Of those seventy-three individuals, thirty-two were in our emergency shelter program. That was, that means they have their own private bedrooms. But we had forty-one individuals in our lower level. And these are the families who are sleeping on the camp beds and sharing the space. So, it was a total of twenty-three families up from six last night. Not only have we been providing a shelter, but also three meals a day. We make sure that we have enough clothing, underwear, pajamas, toiletries, anything else they may need, bus tokens. But the most important thing that we're able to provide is case management because we took this on not just to provide shelter. We knew that we needed to take on this project and find the families a permanent solution, like housing, some type of stability. And so, we use the money as well to pay for a shelter director who serves as the case manager. And when a family comes in, we'll do an assessment, an intake assessment. And that data is entered into HAWK, so it's accessible to anyone who wants to go in and see what we're up to. We're saving that data. And the shelter director will meet with the families daily, sometimes multiple times a day, just to figure out where they are with their housing search or their next steps to figure out if they have anything that they may need. We've had some people come with them serious health conditions. So, some we've had to take to hospital for surgery. Domestic violence, we've had people with mental health issues. And so, it's been very helpful to have the case management piece. She also helps those that drop in with getting their HAWK assessments. Tracy also works with SOS on diversion. But most importantly, the new relationship that we developed is with community mental health. Very often, when families come to us, one or more of the members have some challenges. And so, we've been calling the crisis line when we need to. But last night or yesterday, when we had that terrible cold spell and we realized that although we're at our capacity, we couldn't turn any families away, CMH stepped in and said, "We can help with hoteling. Who would you like us to send some families our way? We can put them up in hotels." And so, we had a couple of families who had serious health conditions, some with accessibility issues, and were able to transfer those over to some hotels so that we cleared more space for additional families who then came because it is super cold. Shelter, what we're doing is not a good fit for everyone. It's, people are out in the open. They're sharing their space. They're sharing bathrooms. But the people who find their way and are using this program are desperate. You have to be that desperate to come and to, we offer a good service, but to be in a shared space with shared bathrooms, these are people who desperately need shelter. We had a house meeting last night that was really tough on the staff because the families who are with us now asked what will happen when this program ends? When we get to the end of March and you no longer have this as an option, what will we do? And that was something that I said that I would bring to this meeting just to leave it open and for us all to discuss at some stage, maybe in a different forum. Dan Kelly and I have already talked about it. When he wraps up his program, there's the hard end. But when you're dealing with children, when you have families, we're not going to be able to do that. We have to have a plan for transitioning them out of this program. We also really desperately need some type of site on the east side of the county. People who find their way to us are coming from Ypsilanti, all of us, the staff that serve Alpha House. We all live on the east side. We're all making our way to the west side to do what we do because Trinity Health was generous and gave us the use of the building basically for free. But we need something on the east side. You know, we've only been able to do this this winter, to do the expansion, to do this program because of the collaboration between a number of different community groups and organizations such as yourself. We're very grateful for the funding. We're grateful to the Annaba Housing Commission for the use of the Ashley Building, Salvation Army, who's another funder. Delana Salk for the resources, for the support, for the guidance, SOS, community mental health, and Trinity Health, all of these organizations, and I'm probably leaving out some. We all worked together and we've been able to do this this winter. I know that we have enough resources within Washtenaw County to make sure that no family is without shelter. We just need to figure out how we continue to work together, to pool our resources, to strengthen partnerships, to brainstorm, to think outside the box, to make this a reality. Because the next couple of years bring a lot of uncertainty, probably a lot of hardship. The trend has been quite bad so far, and we're concerned about where things are going to go. But I believe that we have everything we need to be creative and finding solutions. And so, thank you for the funding and for all your support and for the time here this evening. I think I'm supposed to let Dan have a turn and then we do some Q and A. Is that right?
Shona, I beg your forgiveness, sir. I made a quick switch and Dan, I appreciate that. But I know you are up against a hard board meeting stop. Would you have just five minutes here for any commissioner questions specific to what you shared with us?
Absolutely.
Great. Commissioner Somerville?
So, I don't really have questions. I have comments. So, Shona, thank you. I appreciate you making time to be here, even though you have a board meeting. And so, thanks for highlighting last night's situation. I'm really glad that the dollars that we all worked on related to winter shelter this year are going to good use. And you highlighted a good point that I thought we addressed last year about not stopping winter sheltering at April first because every year we get back to this question because April first does not mean warmer weather, especially in Michigan. And so, I'm just highlighting that for my colleagues and to respond that like, I, we had this conversation last year about not getting to April first this year and having the same issue. And so, I'm happy to work with any of my colleagues to try to identify how to resolve that well in advance. And then, I also just wanted to encourage my colleagues. I got to spend some time at the Alpha House site in Ann Arbor last summer. And we talked a lot about like the expanded capacity with the conversion of some of those office spaces and also like the need for a space in Ypsilanti. And so, I continue to have these conversations with administration about finding a location in Ypsilanti. And I, as I've shared with you, we received a grant in the state budget for emergency shelter with, you know, with a really, like, an emphasis for us, I think, on really needing to meet the need of family shelter needs. Because we, like, since I've been on the board, that's been increasing every year. And so, I'm just mentioning that. every year. And so I'm just mentioning that for everybody in the room and for you because you took time, time to be here and I want you to know that like we're having active conversations about an Ypsie site for family shelter. At least I am with several of my colleagues and administration. And we have some support to make that happen from a one-time grant from the state of Michigan. And then the other thing that I'll say, did I cover everything? I think, I think I actually covered all of the things that I, oh, one thing, I just want to say thank you for your partnership with CMH. I think that's a really critical relationship, just in terms of some of the crisis points that families get into. And I think it's a good way for them to, to use some funding and work with folks that have the expertise to deal with families. So just wanted to like, thank you for mentioning that. And I just wanted to kind of also shout out CMH for being a good partner. And that is all. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ruzza while, while we have her? Okay, Shona, we are cognizant of your meeting. I would echo Commissioner Somerville's. Thanks for your work, reaching out to CMH and vice versa. And thank you. And I will be in touch to hopefully get an update again as we go through the sheltering season here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll turn it over now to Dan Kelly from the Shelter Association. And Dan, thank you again, one, for being here and two, for your schedule flexibility to let Shona present. We'll let you have the floor and then open it up for a few commissioner questions.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, commissioners, for having me. I'll echo a lot with what Shona said from Alpha House, but obviously focus on the individual's end. As we all know, it's been extremely cold the last couple of nights. I would, I do want to start off by saying the same thing what Shona said, a big thank you to the commissioners for that extra winter support. You're going to see that highlighted throughout. We're seeing record need. I shared a quick summary and I'm not a math whiz. I'm a social worker, but I'm noticing on every single graph, everything's up from the previous winter, as Shona said, not just on the families and on the individuals end, we're experiencing record need. Also want to say thank you to the administrator and Tony from the Director of OCD for their support and coordination and leadership the last week or so as the cold weather has approached. They hosted a meeting and it was really helpful. We actually met a couple of times to coordinate around how our, our response was. And I really appreciated that government and nonprofits being brought into that. It was really helpful. Really important for making sure that we've got adequate support for all the individuals and families we serve across the county, especially during these really, really like frigid days we've had the last week. So so I'll highlight a little bit about our winter programs on the individuals end. I won't go over each, every single detail here, but some of the key data points and also what we're doing this winter with that additional support from the county and the city of Ann Arbor and the city of Ypsilanti. And we have, what that primarily means is we have up to six sites at one time at the Shelter Association all throughout the county. We have sites. Our, our biggest site, obviously, right down the street, the Delana Center. And then we have sites in Ypsilanti. We have hotel sites when, when needed. There's some limited hoteling. Thank you to the county again for that funding as well. And then there's, there's other offsites, a rotating church site. There's up to six sites. So during these cold, cold times too, we've been adding additional sites as we can. We actually teamed up with a congregation on the east side of Ypsie Township. A big thank you to Restore, Restore the World Church. They've been hosting people just like, hey, can we bring any additional people in on our end? Can we volunteer? What can we do to support? That's been incredible. The chaplain, Daniel Johnson, I want to thank him especially. He's been really helpful to work with in that regard and just incredibly that the amount of community support that's come around this, this last week. So our numbers at a glance, we've seen increases across the board. We're serving fifteen percent more people on a given night than we did last year, our average utilization. We're hitting over two hundred people on some nights. We actually had a record of two hundred and ten, I believe, on the fifteenth. People on a given night, individuals across all of our sites. We prepared for that. We went up to two fifteen with our maximum anticipating an increase from last year, which was already a record year. But I don't think we were quite prepared for that level, which, you know, fifteen percent, usually it's been ten percent the last two years. So I am happy to share we're, we're able to take everybody and we're going to continue to do that. We'll flex our numbers. We'll put mats in the hallway if we have to. We'll do whatever it takes to make sure we can accept everybody. But it is straining resources across all of our different sites. And the second thing I'll share, kind of highlighting not only an increase in the number of people that we're serving, we're also seeing an increase in acuity. I feel like I've talked about it with the commissioners before. I'll mention it again in other groups too. We're seeing more and more adults over fifty-five, which are bringing some health complications. We're seeing a lot of calls to nine-one-one for emergency, go to the hospital, people having kind of medical things going on. Those, that's happening very frequently. And that's because if you look at our disabled population, it's up to seventy-two percent now. Only seven years ago, that was only forty-six percent. That's gone up exponentially in the last several years. And then our, all of our sites are being utilized. You know, the Ypsilanti site is very busy. That's over ninety percent occupancy on a given night against our maximum. But we're, we're, we're continuing to, to operate this winter. We anticipate being able to meet the need through the rest of the winter. As Commissioner Somerville mentioned, we are extending this year into mid-April because we still have those cold, that cold weather at the beginning of the month, as we all know. And then as Shona mentioned, the other thing I want to highlight is just the most important part of the process, which is it's not just about providing basic needs and shelter and laundry and showers and meals and everything. It's also about that case management support and helping folks move into permanent housing, which we all know is really difficult to do in Washtenaw County because rents are so expensive. I am happy to share that one stat. I should have put it on here and highlighted it. But we have housed thirty-five people so far served in winter shelter, which that's a record. That, that's a group that has typically a lot of the folks in the winter shelter have a lot of needs, a lot of barriers. So I'm really proud of our social workers being able to do that thus far. We'll continue doing that. And yeah, happy to share any other updates with the, the commissioners with the, here and answer any questions.
Dan, thanks so much. I'd like to open it up for questions. You know, Commissioner Somerville has one. We'll go to Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here, Dan. Always appreciate the work that you're doing and taking my phone calls when I randomly want to talk about, you know, like this week's cold and how we're, you know, how we can meet the needs of everyone. Two things, I guess later in the evening during working session, we're going to talk about the senior millage. And so I do think it was an important, important piece that you highlighted just around like the older population of folks who are chronically homeless already, who the Shelter Association is serving. And so I think that's definitely something like we've talked broadly about the need for the senior millage to, you know, keep people from becoming homeless, but there's also older adults in Washtenaw County who are already homeless. And so I think that's just like an important element to add to the conversation later. And then I think just around some of the numbers that you shared and like the capacity. I've brought, like, I've brought this up before, but I guess like, I'll just bring it up here so everybody can hear it. You know, like when we get to situations where like all of the rotating shelters and Delanas are at capacity, like we do have the LRC and I think that we should be like flexible and the need to utilize that if we have like a certain part of the winter that like becomes more intense at like, you know, as the weather gets more intense. So I guess I'm just flagging that because it is working session and I guess like, I think some of the point of this is to fine tune how we can improve our partnerships. And so I'm just flagging that as like, I think that makes sense because it's a county site. And then I just think in, in addition to some of the other points that you made, I, I'm really grateful for the work that you've kind of helped lead just in terms of talking about us moving forward and identifying space for a shelter east of twenty-three in Ypsilanti that can serve that region. We obviously like have a high level of families, which can't be served in the same way that a congregate space for adults could serve families with kids. But I, like, we still have to figure, like, both have to be figured out, I think, at the same time, right? And so I'm grateful for some, for some of the conversations we've already had leading up to, you know, the end of the year and look forward to additional conversations and trying to think through and get somewhere before maybe next winter. So again, just appreciate all the work and effort you put into this and for being here on such a cold night.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Just to add to that real quick. I really appreciate that point because while we're, you could see the numbers are getting close to our maximum. We're going to make it work and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss if, if we continue to see the increase this winter. I think it also speaks to, as you mentioned, beyond this winter, we're kind of piecemealing everything together. Delana Center was built when we didn't have as much need. We joke, the staff often joke about building a fifth or now the sixth floor or, or another site really at this point because our need is just so great in the community. So I appreciate you lifting that up.
Go to Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Dan, thanks for being here. I'll, I have a, a few questions. One is, I mean, you're right. I'm looking at the graph and, and the material that you provided. It's a, you know, it's a clear, it's a clear upswing and I can only imagine how people are getting more like acute because like in my day job, I mean, it's this sort of like a crass way to say it in a sense, but like people who used to be dead are now people I'm taking care of. And people who used to be in the hospital are now out of the hospital. So like, I can't imagine the stress on you. So my first question is really like, how are you? Like, how are you doing with all of that and your staff? You don't have to just do you?
Yeah. Thank you so much for that question. I don't know, last person to ask that. We're doing, we're doing, we're okay. Our team, we're keeping up with the increase. We've got a really dedicated group. Usually kind of self-select when you bring on folks that really want to do this work. They're really dedicated already, you know, like, just like, you know, like in the hospital systems or other, usually folks kind of gravitate towards that if they really enjoy it. We do talk about self-care. In fact, we have a self-care training tomorrow morning and I'm hosting. Professionalism and self-care. We combo those two things, but that's good professionalism, taking care of yourself. But yeah, and we talk about that a lot with the team, encourage time off. We try to have really strong benefits for the team so that they can feel like they're taken care of. And if they need to take leave, they can just take it without having to worry. And I, I hope that helps, helps me, I know, knowing that we offer that. But but yeah, it is challenging. It is like our, kind of our sprint over the winter. So I'm personally okay though, but I appreciate the question a lot.
Let me know if there's anything ever I can do to help with that. Probably an FDB pick-me-up bouquet does not quite work for what you guys need, but let me know how I can help. This is sort of like, because it's working session and I'm thinking about it, like, when I think about this problem sometimes, I am one hundred percent, I have no qualms in saying this, overwhelmed, like because it just seems so ginormous. And then I'll think like, okay, like, because then I'll think like, what can we do? And I'm like, okay, we're not the only ones. It's a whole community. It's still seems pretty ginormous. It feels like I'm trying to eat the elephant, you know, like. So I guess I'm thinking, we keep trying to think about what we can do. And, and we're so limited also, you know, like, as I keep quoting Commissioner Beam and everywhere I go, like, we don't make widgets. So you know, we have a finite pot of money and I'm a little worried what's going to happen to that finite pot also. So I guess I'm just wondering, like, in a sense of like an ideal world, like knowing we can't, like, the county can't save everything, even though I think we all have a desire to. And that there's a broader community. What's like the way that we get our hands around this in a more sustainable way, according to Dan Kelly? Just an easy question.
Yeah, that's really hard. I think it's, and I think it comes with good, good coordination conversations we've had so far about bolstering our system. You always try to assess the problem better. I do think assessment, there is a point where like it no longer provides very much value though, and I, I don't know if we're at that point or not. I don't know. I keep questioning that. But I mean, I guess going back to the basics, you know, trying to encourage more housing development. A lot more. We need way more. I know a couple of municipalities, Ann Arbor and Ypsie are doing a lot. I know the, the county here has explored different ways to get involved in that and support that, very supportive of that, of those efforts. I think on the basic need end, trying to be as nimble as possible. And I really appreciate the nimble nature of some of the funding from the county in that regard. And I think a lot of funders are, are getting to that point now where they're realizing that more, more kind of quick nimble funding kind of helps with resolving issues faster. There's, there are some best practices in our work, one being like diversion, I think has been talked about before. I think Shona mentioned it. That's helping folks that are coming to you, like identify strengths they have in their own social, social networks or communities to see if we can tap into those and kind of minimize their need to come into shelter. Doesn't work for everybody, but I think those sort of innovative best practices help a little bit. And then I think to your point, Commissioner, like getting the broader public involved, other municipalities. I feel like there's still a big gap in, in our county despite, you know, we have really strong social service network. I, I think for some folks who've been here a minute, I've probably said this a million times, but I come from Metro Detroit and first mistake I made is I thought Washtenaw was part of Metro Detroit when I came here and I learned that, apparently that's not the case. But in Metro Detroit, there, there's, when I came, when you're on the outside looking in, people always say, oh, Washtenaw is so resource-rich. When you come here, we realize though, the need is also really, really high too. But we are doing some really good things and we should be proud of that. But I think it's kind of building on those things and, and, and doing more. But I still think there is a huge gap around letting the community be more aware of the intense need. Because I think sometimes be having Ann Arbor, University of Michigan and Eastern Michigan and these two large universities in a successful county, people don't realize just how much there is need. So I think the greater public still has a, a kind of a, if we educate folks, maybe they'll become more involved. Maybe I'm being too hopeful though in today's day and age, but I'm, that's kind of where I come back to. So it's kind of the basics, build housing, more basic need services, good coordination, and then involving the public more and getting folks more involved and other municipalities, as you mentioned.
Okay, so no small task.
Yeah, it's like gigantic.
So we'll have it fixed by next week. No, I mean, I'm being flippant, but it's a big, it's a big task. I'm just going to follow up that, that with like, one more question. It's another big question. I think you're probably right that there's probably a greater public need because I think probably only sometimes when people are really keyed in to the system and like the, the social services system in Washtenaw, they understand the need. I think like, I mean, I had this conversation even about like when we had at the hospital, like they have to start asking social determinants of health questions. And when I asked in a meeting, like, so what are we going to do with that information? And even on that call, they were like, oh, there's so many resources in Washtenaw County. And I was like, oh, God. Yes, but they're all so stretched. And so like, how do we get, like, if you're talking about greater public knowledge, like, how do we do that? Like, do we like rent billboards? Like, what do we do?
It's a great question. We're always trying to do that at the Shelter Association too. I just try to walk up to people and, and I, I can't say how many times surprised when I say there's up to three thousand people homeless in our county every year. People are really shocked by that number. They're like, really? In Washtenaw County? I mean, yeah, you, we could do more of that. I think, I think there is an, there is an increase in awareness. I will say as the housing issue is impacting more people, I think people are saying, oh, my God, it's very expensive. Like maybe even, I hear that more and more often that kind of the housing issue is now like known by all. So maybe capitalizing on that and saying, hey, this is having some downstream effects on others. Because I, I do think there's some more things we can do. And there has been some positive momentum from, I hate to say it, but this horrible housing issue that we've had around like actual raised awareness around this. You've seen a lot of changes at the state. And then locally, you know, in more investment and stuff like that, especially with the new properties going up. There's one right there, you know, right across the street that's going to have folks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Somerville has another question. Just want to open it up for anybody hasn't asked one yet. Seeing none, Commissioner Somerville?
Thank you so much. I know that sometimes bringing up Kofu is like saying Beetlejuice three times in this room, but I'm going to bring it up because I think, and maybe you can react to this, like it has changed the way some human service resources has been, have been able to be like either more helpful, like, like struggle a little bit. Obviously, like as a board, we've made changes in the last two years to put more general fund dollars into the homelessness space for eviction prevention, rapid rehousing and some of this like shelter response in the winter. That's why we have more dollars on the table this year for you and for Alpha House and for other providers. But like, do you think that it would be helpful to engage in a series of conversations trying to get funding partners on the same page to try to coordinate specific funding around housing and homelessness, specifically like these temporary like crisis situations? And then also do you think it would be helpful for like us as a body to try to have some conversations with our neighboring counties? Who I know we get people here that come into our system because there are not resources in West, like Western Wayne or Monroe or Livingston. And so like, I think it's great. And I think historically, like we have been a resource regionally, like outside of the county, except for we've lost like what 800 affordable housing units in the last couple of years in Wasna County. And then like on top of the like compression of like cost of living and all of that, and just like the way that the housing trends are going in Wasna County in particular, like, well, like, we can't be the only resource for like a county region on homelessness. Like we need the other counties to come to the table and work with us. So I guess, do you think that's useful? Should we spend time doing that? Would you be willing to do that with us?
Uh, the short answer, yes, definitely. I think the, the question about bringing back some part of coordinated funding model, I think that'd be, uh, I think that was known as the best practice. Like I mentioned, being from Metro Detroit, we would often look in and say, oh my God, they're doing this. And it's a, and the reason it's so, um, was so effective, I think, was coming from the nonprofit area is just, um, that, um, otherwise the nonprofits, we wind up kind of, we want to be collaborative and not against each other, so to speak, kind of fighting for the same dollars. It creates that spirit of collaboration and it kind of like fosters it. And I think that that helps with that, um, that sort of model. Uh, and I think that is something really strong about Washington that we've always have had since I've came here is that the providers are talking all the time. We are talking with local government, uh, coming from counties out east that was not as common. It was more just, oh, I'm going after this funding and this funding. And it was, you're kind of, you're trying to, you're trying to do your programs in a vacuum, I guess. And it's not as effective because you might be duplicating services. You might be doing things that unintentionally, you're not trying to do that. But, so I think that the answer to that is definitely yes. And then I think speaking with other counties is, uh, always, um, going to be a really positive thing too. Because maybe there's ways we can lift up best practices here and help other counties lift up more services. And I'm not trying to pick on other counties or anything, but I'll state, there has been some shelter closures in our area. We still primarily serve folks from 48197, 48198 and across, uh, 48103 and the rest of the whole county here. So just want to say that primarily our folks that we serve are from Wasna. But like you said, there are folks who come in from seeking help, uh, from outside the county. And the, that could be, I think, related to some shelter closures in the last couple of years. Uh, there was a shelter in Livingston that closed a few years ago. We saw an immediate bump. It, it was smaller. There was, there was a bump though, immediate, uh, from that. Uh, and then there was a shelter last year that they've like had to partially close, uh, in Out Wayne on the, and west part of the county, uh, Wayne County. So not that far from here. And those sort of things do have impacts on your, your, you know, service delivery. Uh, we, we always try to reach out to, um, some of those communities ourselves, but I think having the county support that would make that even more of a powerful conversation.
Awesome. Thank you for responding to that.
Any other questions for Dan while we have him here? Dan, I'll take my shot then and just say, is there anything, uh, in a nutshell that you're seeing this year? That is an outlier, that is different, that is, uh, something to just flag for the nine of us in January rather than looking back?
Yeah, I think, I feel like a broken record, but the biggest thing is just the increase. We knew it, it would be one, but it's even more so. Uh, and then I think we want to look at a more sustainable winter model. If we're going to be able to continue to make our commitment, uh, that we've made since I've started the, uh, and many years ago, we've always had this commitment on the individuals end to say no to, to certainly ask to everybody, uh, in the winter months at least. And I think that commitment is that thread. If we don't think about some kind of scaling of our model. And I think it comes down to like sites sometimes, doesn't need to be like permanent year round. Maybe it's a, uh, some kind of, uh, but, so we are look actively looking at the Shelter Association. Uh, we have a facilities committee. In fact, I want to thank JCP Facilities Director. He helps with that and provides data and joins the committee. So thank you again to the county for that support. Um, but I think that's the biggest thing is that we're seeing that just that sheer increase in a number of people seeking help. And I think that's not going to change unfortunately.
I've, I've roused interest from my colleague, Commissioner Robbie.
You're just such an inspiration to me, Commissioner LaBarre, that I, I wanted to speak up to. So, so you, you talked a lot about different, uh, things that you're facing, different trends, some of the solutions that you're talking about. And I heard you talk about, um, you know, all the different conversations that have been happening around, how do we expand shelter capacity in the county? And I know that at, at this point, you've mentioned sort of like, uh, a list of different like dreams that we could have of, what's the most viable path forward and what would you need to get it done?
It's a great question. Uh, it's a little bit of a guessing game because it all depends on like what is available, right? But I think there is some economies of scale around taking the existing winter investments and finding a more like, whether it's a permanent site or a seasonal site, and then using it there. Um, I think you'll get some economies of scale with that, without having to make a huge significant investment. Cause otherwise to Commissioner Scott's point, you know, when you start to think like really big, it's, I start to also kind of get lost a little bit. So I get more tactical in that regard, but I think in the next year that could be, or next year, a couple of years. Per minute site in the east side, for example, we, one way to look at it, whether it's individuals and families are two different sites. I think there would be a reality in, in that regard. Um, and I think there also could be some state investment, um, if that's approached, uh, thoughtfully, depending on the need. Cause there are, um, dollars that are coming online for folks with, uh, medical conditions that we work with out of our, we have a program called Recuperative Care. That's primarily folks coming out of the hospital, uh, who are homeless. Uh, we, we serve them out of a hotel right now, but it's really expensive. And if we had a permanent site, we could probably serve folks more effectively, serve more, not turn away so many people with like kind of medical conditions that require 24/7 supervision. Uh, maybe they have a substance use issue and they want to watch to make sure they don't change the pick line or something. But, so I think there's some economies of scale that we can have around like identifying permanent sites. Because I think the issue always becomes if we're going down the direction of focusing only on basic needs, we don't want to do it to the detriment of our longer term goal, which is having enough housing for folks. So it's a balancing act. So I hope that was at least somewhat of a.
Yeah, no, that, um, that helps. You know, I, I think, um, I guess my follow-up thought to that is not as much for you, but more for the administrator and Andrew, um, as we, I, I don't know what the plan for the space plan is moving forward since we had a, you know, you know, uh, but like, as we revisit those discussions, which I assume that there will be some revisiting that will be happening. I hope that we can consider the facilities that we have in the county already at our disposal for potential sheltering operations. I, I, I mean, we built the shelter that you're operating in. It's a county building. It's, we maintain it. We have, uh, sort of a, a prior, um, uh, established working relationship that works, uh, with, you know, being able to house a nonprofit in a county-run building. Um, and whether it's you guys or another organization or you're collaborating or whatever it looks like, I think that we can replicate that model in other parts of the county where that need is present. And again, we have sort of the, we have the facilities to do it. And especially if we're going to be building or buying new facilities for other types of operations and moving county operations around. I feel like that would present a decent opportunity for us to partner.
Thank you. Uh, any other last questions here for Mr. Kelly? Okay. Uh, Dan, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And want to, uh, thank you and Shona again for making this work on, uh, on short notice. Thanks so much. Yes, Commissioner Scott.
Thanks, Chair. I wonder if before I, we close the discussion, if we're allowed to talk to each other about this a little bit?
I operate under Roberts rules per board rules, but I also have, uh, special Andy LaBarre rules that will allow that discourse. And so I, I think that could be useful. Yes, please go ahead.
Thanks. Having recently looked over the board rules in great detail, I don't think there's anything necessarily to borrow us from that. But I guess the question is maybe a little bit, um, it might be Andrew and Greg and, and Commissioner Somerville. And maybe to some extent, Commissioner Hodge. It, it could probably include Commissioner Light too. What areas in the county on the east side have we been able to identify as land? Where shelter could be built? Because I know there's, there was discussion, right? That Ypsie City Council had about taking our Towner site, which to me doesn't seem feasible because it's used a lot, like it's a very used location. So I'm wondering what other sites and what other places are available?
Commissioner Scott, who do you want to direct that to for staff? Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm interested maybe staff and, and Commissioner Somerville looked like she had some things to say also. So both. Yeah, thanks. Um, so I guess two things, like when we were reviewing the space plan, I guess under one suggestion, we would have been moving CMH staff like totally out of that space, which like I have been adamantly against. To really kind of hone in on comments that have been made here at Public Comment, um, recently. And in the city council room in the city of Ypsilanti, there have been suggestions that 750 Towner is like an empty space that could be used. That is not true. Um, it is used, it was originally supposed to be like a new crisis center for 24/7 use, but then the pandemic happened. And then it got eventually turned into the call center office. And then after that, more staff moved in from one of the, the, the ACT, if that's the acronym, and I'm missing like the full explanation of that. Uh, but most recently, I, when I spoke to CMH staff about that, they informed me that now not only is the call center staff in 750 Towner, so is the ACT team. And so I'm happy to like pass on that information to all of the commissioners to take a look at. But it's been misinformation and folks who continue to say that 750 Towner is an option have been told that it's not. And I've looked deeply into this and I wish it was. That would be great. That would solve a lot of problems, but it's not. And it's not even like sizable. Um, and I don't, Jason is in the back. You know, there is a basement there, but it's not a finished basement and there's no egress system. Um, and so he could probably speak to that, but just in terms of like inside the city county owned land or property, non-existent. But we are looking at some other sites that could potentially be purchased, both in the city or in the township of Ypsilanti or in Pittsfield Township along the Wasna corridor that are east of 23. And then I think really personally, and I'll let Justin chime in here. If we're looking to purchase a site, it really shouldn't go like that far east. Because then we're just like bordering up with Wayne County, um, when like regionally on the east side of the county, we've got Superior Township, Pittsfield Township, Ypsie Township and Ypsie City. And Tony could correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a majority of our home, like new homelessness, individuals and families are coming from Ypsilanti Township. Um, and so really like if we're thinking through both on like a data perspective for like where folks are coming from and then like, like along the bus line where other services are, it like needs to be somewhere like regionally on the bus line that folks from all different townships could, um, you know, you, excuse me, utilize. But, um, I could be wrong unless there's other space in the city that exists that I don't know about. But I, I do want to clear up misinformation that has been shared and continues to be shared.
So here's what I'll do. I'm going to go first to our administrator, then to Commissioner Hodge, and then Commissioner Robbie has a question in the queue.
Yeah, really quick. I, I just want to lean into the conversation around 750 Towner. I've had extensive, extensive conversations with our executive director, Trish Cortez. And that space is just not a feasible location for us. So I really would like to check it off and get it off the list and continue to look for opportunities. As you've indicated, Commissioner Somerville, along a bus line, more centrally located on the eastern part of the county. Those conversations will continue. Andrew is the best person to talk to about the, uh, nuts and bolts of the space plan. So he's here along with Jason. So we'll answer whatever questions you guys have. But I really want to put to bed this conversation around 750 Towner, because it just isn't a viable option.
Thank you. Go to Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you. Uh, we'd had some longer term conversations over, it's probably been a couple of years, um, about a site on the St. Joe campus that if we were able to acquire or be able to support that property, that would be enough to really put a dent in the, the family homelessness challenges that we're seeing. I don't know if you want to say more, but, uh, there hasn't, I don't think there's been significant progress on that, not on the fault of our team. Just the fault of circumstances and who owns it. Yeah.
Commissioner Robbie, I don't want to lose the sort of stream of consciousness here. Is it great? I'll go back to Commissioner Somerville then.
Yeah, I'll respond to what Commissioner has just said. Um, when Senator Irwin secured that state grant to expand, um, shelter space in Wasna County, we had a series of conversations with St. Joe's. That space is not an option. Both because they don't know, like the, the hospital system doesn't know how they want to use that space. And the grant has like, you know, an expiration date. So, um, maybe in the future, like it could become an option for us. But it's not going to be an immediate option based on my individual conversations as recent as this fall, um, with, with St. Joe's Trinity. They, like, they haven't made a decision on that site, unfortunately.
We'll go to Commissioner, Commissioner Robbie, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you. Um, so a few things just to like, make sure that we're all on the same page. The eastern campus, well, this is probably a question, question for Jason, but eastern campus is how many buildings?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, at Towner, we have, uh, three buildings, Towner one, Towner two and Towner three or 22 Center, which is just about half a block down from 750 Towner. Um, and then a little bit farther east, uh, in downtown, uh, Ypsilanti, we have 415 Michigan or ECGC. So that's our current, uh, footprint, uh, in the Ypsilanti area.
So the three buildings are 750 Towner, 22 Center Street and 555 Towner?
Correct. And 555 Towner is actually two separate buildings. Yep.
So there's four buildings in the Towner campus and there's a building downtown Ypsie.
Correct.
And when we met to discuss the space plan, I remember you guys telling me that one of the two buildings is, you would like to demolish it basically?
Uh, one of the plans called for Towner one, which is the oldest, uh, facility on the campus and has some, some challenges to overcome. That would, you know, that, that's a potential option, um, that, uh, we did, uh, discuss throughout the space plan process.
And for 22 Center Street, what I remember you guys indicating is that that was, um, not very occupied due to, that's where DHHS was housed, but because DHHS's needs had declined, the building was, I believe you guys told me it was being about 90% unused?
At that time, yes. Uh, currently the, the state has, uh, reached out. We've been in discussions. They'd like to reduce their footprint by about 50%. So there is, uh, you know, there's a potential for some square footage and space at that facility as well. Uh, pending negotiations with the state, of course, uh, on with the lease.
So they were only about 10% footprint and they want to reduce by 50%? So they're only going to be a 5% footprint? Is that?
No, that's not correct. Um, they, uh, they've been occupied 100% of that building for approximately 30 years. Through, since COVID, they've really reduced, uh, their, their head count there. So, um, the latest is they would like to occupy just 50% of the overall building.
I understand. Okay. Thank you. But you're saying for the duration of the pandemic, the building was basically not used?
Very sparsely, yes.
So there's a potential of seeing a sizable reduction in the usage of that building soon?
Potentially, yes.
So that's a 44,000 square foot building?
Correct.
So they would need about 20,000 square feet?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, so that seems like it may open up some opportunities. I know that the whole point of the space plan is moving things around to try to figure out how we can most accurately and efficiently use our buildings. So that is basically what I intended with my comments earlier is as we envision the space plan, as we envision how we're moving around different offices in the county. I share Commissioner Somerville's concerns about, um, moving, uh, CMH. It's part of the reason I didn't support the plan. Uh, but. But even if we keep CMH where it is, it seems like we have substantial square footage. I know that the plan for the Michigan Ave Building in your ideal world, the two of you, you would like to see the county vacate that building. That's another building that would open up potential for shifting things around. Maybe it's DHHS goes there, opening up twenty-two Center Street. All I'm saying is there's opportunities for movement and we have a portfolio of buildings on the east side that are clearly underutilized or will be very soon underutilized. Um, and that opens up opportunities for us to have these types of discussions. I would also ask in terms of the uh, in terms of seven fifty Towner, I just wanna, I know you guys want to put that one to bed. Which is fine. I don't have a, I mean, my broader thing is I just want to have the discussion about we have the portfolio of of buildings on the east side to have a discussion. I'm also happy to look at buying more property. Very open to that, too. For the Towner site, though, um, was that building renovated recently or what what types of investments have we made into that building?
Into the uh, four fifteen building?
Uh, seven fifty Towner.
Seven fifty Towner. Uh, the yes, there was uh, during COVID, right before COVID, we renovated the north uh, third of the building uh, for CMH. The south, the southern, two-thirds of the facility is occupied by Full Circle, which is a partner uh, with CMH. Um, so yes, about a third of the building was renovated in the last five years, five, six years.
Was, what money did we use for that renovation?
I I'd have to double check. I believe it was um, CMH helped with the project. I just have to look that up. I apologize.
All right. Would love to follow up on that with you. Thanks.
Go to Commissioner Hodge, then Commissioner Somerville. I'm gonna note uh, if we want to adhere to our seven o'clock time, we are likely not going to be able to do that in any substantive way with the senior discussion. If we need to go after, I believe we've amended the board rules to to allow for that. Uh, Commissioner Hodge and Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. I'll just be really quick because I think we're moving in a different direction. I was just gonna follow up on the point that Commissioner Somerville uh, was making earlier that we were talking about, that the property we were talking about, that location would be a really good location if we could make it work. So the the question, the the one that we mentioned that was on the St. Joe Campus.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if that could work, that would be a great location, but we don't know if it'll work in a timeline. You said what?
What was the building?
Yeah, I I'll give you the address. Okay, that's that's it. You can go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just um, to end, just say, I think the conversations around needing to expand shelter are like urgent, and it was my understanding that we were nowhere near being in a position to even like move forward with the space plan. And so some of the information that was just shared about like potential for DHHS, like, you know, I missed a few board meetings at the end of the year because of my own health issues, but that's like news to me. And so that just brings up a different point, like generally speaking, my experience with conversations around the space plan have been mixed just based on like the getting the same presentation that still included moving CMH, and this is not, I don't want to like hash out old stuff. I thought the goal, and at least in conversations that I've had with um, the mayor and with Dan Kelly, has been how can we figure out a site to buy like urgently? Like, so we can use it next year. We also have needs for permanent um, day shelter space. And so those are all wrapped up in this conversation. And to my knowledge, also, if we wanted to get rid of the court, that's not a decision that we get to make. The city of Ypsilanti has to make that. Um, and so like if the space plan were something that was gonna happen and we would actually see significant movement on the spaces in District Six, then that would be great. But to my knowledge, that's not possible. And so the best path for us to put our resources in is to identify a site to buy, which is work that we've already started doing with city officials and with the Shelter Association. And so I guess I just wanted to make that clear, like I were reacting to an urgent need. It's not my understanding that there's available space that could be utilized right now that wouldn't require significant work. Um, and the need to like move existing office like use out of. And so um, I just want to point that out. And I also want to say my comments about the space plan and misinformation around seven fifty is not related to anything that a colleague in this room said. It's information that has been stated over and over again during public comment and in council chambers and in resolutions approved by city council that make it seem like we have this empty building that could be used because the reality is if we had an empty building in the city of Ypsilanti, it would be used right now for shelter. We don't. And so I just want to make that clear. I wish we were hoarding empty space that could be used right now. That would be great, but we don't. So I just wanted to make that point clear.
Chair, Chairman, I I just want, and I'll be quick.
Briefly, yes.
There's there's three things to this and they're all moving parts. And again, uh, Andrew and I have been talking about uh, revisiting the space plan, uh, you know, certainly at a at a macro level, we need to get back to uh, you know, the 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 kinds of goals that you all set for us as a board. Uh, but there, I heard three things. So Commissioner Somerville, yes, we are continuing to actively look for spaces. Uh, you know, as we as we speak, uh, for a a shelter for us to buy or acquire. Secondly, there's been a lot of conversation about uh, four fifty Michigan Avenue and that entire block and and how we might reimagine that entire block. As you all know, we have a parking lot on that, on that parcel that uh, I don't think gets as much use as as it should. And all of these things are components of the space plan, which uh, you know, Andrew and I have been talking about how we bring that back in in some form. So I say all that to say yes to everything that you guys are talking about. We are working on making sure that those things come back to you as quickly as we can.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. I want to throw out a whole different location of potential space where I feel like we could think about, and I don't know where the ownership extends to and where they don't, but we own an awful lot of land at the corner of Washtenaw and Hogback. Um, and I don't know if there's space on that land to build a shelter, but that seems like a great location. Um, it is central to buses that go in all directions. Um, it is by the youth center. There is grocery shopping nearby. I I don't know. I mean, it's it's throwing out something new into the mix right now, and I don't expect anybody to have a well-thought-out opinion, but just when I look at that location, I feel like there's a bunch of land that we own there and maybe that's a, maybe that's a potential.
One of the challenges of early meetings in the years, figuring out who's doing what and then getting everybody in the queue. I'd be happy to set aside time at our next meeting if we want to discuss uh, uh, an east side or or another shelter specifically. And I'm not trying to truncate discussion. If that's though, uh, you know, helpful, we 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 can do that. Commissioner Somerville.
I just want to just say this while it's fresh. The problem with putting shelter space that close to the sheriff's office is there are many people who won't utilize it. But I do think there's a scenario where maybe if we built like family shelter, that would be different because I think and like I would want to talk to like Shona and survey families who have utilized Alpha House, like that scenario might be different for them. Be just because of like just unique circumstances. So I just want to flag that, like, I wouldn't be supportive really, but like I think there's like a scenario where potentially like family shelter space, if done right, and like maybe like the sheriff's department's not visible somehow, but like I just want to flag that for like adult, like the adult population would be a huge problem. Um, they wouldn't utilize the service.
Uh, any other Commissioner comments on this item? Uh, if if not, I would just simply say, uh, I'm I'm looking to be supportive of colleagues in the community as a whole. Uh, and we'll look to my my east side colleagues for a little more on the specifics and location and so forth. Great. We'll move on to the uh, the next agenda component. Discussion of the senior millage discussion. This is on the agenda, really born out of a a relatively quick discussion at leadership uh, last week, a desire to sort of get a sense of where folks uh, are at on the senior millage in terms of what they want to see valued within implementation. Uh, I want to open it up for Commissioner comment, but certainly want to, uh, if if either are open to starting, would look to Commissioner Somerville or Mashieski, just in terms of some of their work. And Commissioner Mashieski, your hand has gone up, sir.
Thank you. Um, I just want to note before you start on this, I appreciate the presentation and in the comment about uh, the sheltering situation in our county and homelessness issues. Um, and I I hope we're not truncating the discussion on that. Couple of very important issues we've got on our agenda tonight, so I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair, uh, to cover a little bit about where we're at with senior millage and um, I have greatly appreciated the comments that have come uh, not only in our board meetings, but mostly through conversations I've had in the community um, with people who are um, stakeholders in this process and interested in how these funds will be put out uh, to use and make an impact in Washtenaw County. Over the past month or so, I've been revisiting a document that I had created last summer, a framework document. Um, and kind of taking in some of the comments that I have heard from the community, from myself, from my own notes and in in my thoughts on this and um, if I may, I'd like to kind of maybe share share that and where I'm at and 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 put some of these things out there, uh, because I'm really interested as we move forward and to create a policy and how we're going to implement this, uh, this millage, um, thoughts and priorities from members of the Board of Commission Commissioners here, um, to help us kind of get to that point where we've got a policy to consider. Um, so I appreciate the opportunity to to um, have this discussion tonight. Um, I want to start by by going back to what I consider to be the foundation of millage, um, which is uh, nutritional program enhancement, um, working with the nutrition funding that we already get in in Washtenaw County from our Area Agency on Aging, Ageways, um, to enhance that, um, enhance the programs that exist in our community already that do such great work. Um, so that they can improve and expand upon uh, the meals that they're providing, whether they're home delivered or congregant settings or uh, other types of nutrition services as well. So for me, that's kind of point number one, is building upon through nutrition programs, ultimately for me with the goal of having no waitlist for these types of services in Washtenaw County. Um, the second thing uh, is for me, again, foundational support for the senior centers um, that exists and are important community focal points uh, for many people in the community. And I have put out there the the amount of two hundred thousand dollars uh, to help them pay for their operational expenses. Uh, so they know that they will have good qualified staff. They're going to be able to pay their their bills and and do the things they need to do as a senior center and can maybe focus some of their other um, funding on programmatic things and impacting the community. So that, for me, that's a second really important part of what I'm looking for in a senior millage is that that support to senior centers. Uh, and I am aware, by the way, I know last summer I talked about that there was a federal um, kind of accreditation that was available, that that organization is no longer doing that accreditation for senior centers. Uh, and so we need to come up with some other mechanism, perhaps a municipal designation of what their senior center is. Um, might might serve that role. Um, third is something that's come up um, in my conversations with Commissioner Somerville and others as well, and kind of um, dovetails with what we were just talking about, but perhaps a goal of ending older adult homelessness in Washtenaw County, um, partnering with other community-based organizations. Yeah, building upon the work of uh, Treasurer McClary and what she did on preventing homelessness. Uh, so that is, I think, an important part that's come into the discussion um, since last summer. Another important component for me is this RFP for services and programs. Putting money into community-based organizations that exist here in our county, that have been doing this work for years, that are experts in what they do. Uh, and allowing them to enhance uh, and further develop the work that impacts our county. There are a number of things here I think that can be addressed, and I I've kind of been creating a list over time, which includes things like health and wellness education, uh, fall prevention, diabetes education, nutrition education, caregiver education, aquatic programming, financial management classes, exercise and fitness like Tai Chi and yoga. So all these kind of health and wellness programs that exist out there, many of which are accredited programs on their own um, are in have tremendous impact uh, in the older adult population. Uh, transportation. Uh, we have existing transportation resources. For me, this is a door-to-door focus. This is a focus on getting people to doctor's appointments, clinical appointments, um, non-emergency um, appointments. Uh, and a focus on getting people to governmental resources like county offices, so a security office, your township hall, your city hall, your secretary of state office. Uh, and focusing on those very basic things which are known to have an impact on health and wellness. Uh, when you get to appointments, you are you are healthier. Um, basic legal aid is something else that we could put out there. Um, wills, advanced directives for healthcare, patient advocates, guardianships, all of these things um, that require legal assistance. Um, we could utilize those resources that exist in the community, caregiver support, Alzheimer's support, dementia care, grandparents raising grandchildren. Um, and respite resources for older adults, all things that we could put out through an RFP. Behavioral health interventions, uh, perhaps assistive and adaptive technologies, uh, rollators, uh, canes, walkers, uh, mobility aid distribution, uh, technology education, you hear a lot about that. Uh, trying to help older adults understand used technology, friendly visitor programs, and then innovative and gap-filling proposals. So you never know what's gonna happen next. Uh, like COVID. Uh, and how do you address situations that arise there? So looking for innovative solutions from these organizations that are in the community and experts in aging and older adults. Um, so all of these things to me fit in this RFP bucket, the things that we can go and look for innovative proposals to support work that's has been done and and will be done. Uh, I do believe there is also a component um, that the county needs to um, take care of. Um, I have been a supporter of what we've referred to as a Director of Aging Services or Aging Resources, a position here at the county that's the face of aging issues in our county, can represent the county and with our stakeholder community on these issues. Um, that can provide oversight to a team that might be working on some issues here at the county. Uh, would participate in the RFP process, et cetera. Um, I would envision an aging program specialist that would work with the Commission on Aging, provide that staffing work. Work on identifying needs, uh, work with the different organizations that exist, do community education and outreach about what the county offers. Uh, I think it's important for us to monitor and collect data on what we are putting into the community. Um, a cyclical process, right? Where we need to understand what we're doing with these services and resources. Um, and be able to report that back to the community in terms of success, but also feed what we're funding in the future. This is not a simple thing to do. Um, and I believe that the county should play that administrative role. Uh, monitoring compliance of our contracted partners, there's accounting, the county needs to play a role in that in making sure that people are doing what they have contracted with the county to do in terms of these funds. Uh, and then, um, you know, the county administration also needs to coordinate with stakeholders like Ageways, like other partners in the community. I've talked about a resource hub, the idea of a phone number where that we would advertise through outreach and education, so people could call that number, get resource referrals and information to all the community organizations we have that provide resources, understand how do I sign up for meals? How do I um, how do I look for an assisted living facility for a parent? All of these questions that come up. Um, I believe that we need to have a resource hub, one place that we can put out there in our community for people to call and connect with all of these other resources. Uh, we've talked about minor home repair programs. You need to really define what that means. Um, the the funds can go really quickly if you have a very broad definition of what minor home repair is, but uh, I think we need to put a, I mean, I'm really interested in what you all think about this one very specifically, about what what does that mean um, to you? Um, you know, for me, it means things like gutter repair, siding repair, door repair, step repair, um, minor plumbing issues, minor electrical issues, um, light bulbs, smoke alarms, maybe. Grab bar installations, um, shower chairs. Does it mean bathroom conversions? Does it mean roofs? Right? Now, you know, you're gonna talk about very expensive projects. What does it mean? What's the line there, right? What can we do? Um, there's a lot of things to consider there. And ultimately, at the end of this, um, I do believe that we need to do and fund an, or not an annual, but a periodic needs assessment process. With a bit of academic rigor behind it. Um, so that we are understanding what the needs are in our community from a a survey-based perspective, as well as what the Commission on Aging is 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 hearing about at their meetings. And to do that on maybe a three-year cycle, a four-year And to do that on maybe a three-year cycle, a four-year cycle, maybe in, in coordination with the contracting cycle for the RFP. So we know when we put out an RFP, what, what are the needs we're trying to address, right? So those are, those are my notes that I've accumulated and things that I'm interested in, in putting into, into this policy and this document and, and impacting our community with. But Chair, would really be interested in what others are thinking. What have I missed that, that you really want to talk about and, and see fleshed out? So thank you for the time.
Great. What, what I'll do then is ask for folks to give essentially their, their thoughts and then we'll open it up for discussion at the end. I have Commissioner Scott, then Somerville, and then Hodge in the queue.
Thanks Chair. That's, that's quite a list. It's very aspirational and also shows that you really, I mean, gives a lot of the expertise of what you do in your day job, which I think is fantastic. One of the things that I think that we probably need to, to, that strikes me, listening to that list though too, and thinking about how we go forward is I think we definitely need to be engaging the REO on this discussion. Talking with him in his office about some of these needs, also through an equity lens. I think that you're right in talking about how, you know, we'll have a memorial for Treasure McClary is that next week? Is that right? Thank you, next week. But I think one of the things that we can do really to most honor her legacy is to try to figure out how to keep people in their homes. Like that was a big thing for her and so there, there's lots of need. And one thing I think we need to be clear about though, when we're having this conversation, is that it's great that we pass the millage, but it's not a panacea. Like, it's not, like, this isn't going to solve every problem. And so that's why when I talked to Commissioner Labarre about this, and I think when I've talked to you a little bit about this, I thought like, in a sense, we need to think about like triaging what we think are the most important needs to, to serve in the community. Or as I've said to Commissioner Labarre, like, what are our overarching like morals and values that, or, or ethics that we're putting behind this? Like, what do we, if we thought like aspirationally, what is like, what could we do with this money that would serve the greatest good? Like, what do we think is most important as a board? As we're shaping how this money is spent, what do we think that people in Washtenaw County want to see with this money? I think that's, that's an important thing for us to consider. Personally, I will stop talking, but I love this, when, the first thing you said about this nutrition enhancement and enhancing those programs. I think it would be a shame if we had a millage like this and we felt like seniors were going hungry in our community. So I feel like that, that's like a no-brainer to me. And my, my other big thing is thinking about how we can, it goes hand in hand with our earlier discussion, how we can use some of these funds to help mitigate senior homelessness and how to keep people in their homes. And I don't, that, there's probably a lot of different programs that we can do with that. And some of them probably are include, that include RFP for Services and Programs to help people keep their houses in order also. But those, and then, and then, I don't know, my God, I want to say yes to everything. Also, the door-to-door transportation seems really important too, like a transportation that's more than just like pulling into your driveway and honking. It's like somebody who goes into the house and helps you put on your shoes. And that gets you into the doctor's appointment to help you check in. And we do have transportation services in this county who do that. So, but they, you know, they're limited. So those are some of the things that I guess I would like to see and say about this. I want to try to make sure we're seeing the dollars be the most transformative that they can be. Thanks.
Great. Move to Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just say co-sign what Commissioner Maschiezki and Commissioner Scott already said, and then there's just a few points that I took notes on that I wanted to highlight. So I'll start with a concept to have a working, working session where we maybe utilize a different space, like maybe the LRC where we can invite the Commission on Aging, we can invite folks from the municipalities to participate, we can invite the community, maybe we'll get a lot of folks need to use the whole portion of the LRC, but we can actually do like a working, working session where we, we actually, Katie, sticky notes, we use sticky notes and stickers to like, all like agree on one area, I think is like a really good way to involve like a broad net of community engagement that goes beyond just the Commission on Aging as a way to like, you know, get feedback and make decisions based on, on that and help the community also understand, you know, some of the intentions around the millage on a deeper level and be part of the process. I just also want to add that I recently participated in a town hall discussion in my district around the senior millage and for like an hour and 10 minutes, I answered every question in the book and did my best to reflect my personal like goals around this and not say that this is what the Board of Commissioners is doing, but this is what I'd like to do, or this is what a few of my colleagues and I have said. But I think it'd be good to have that happen with all of us and the Commission on Aging and other folks to come out. So would love to talk about that at, you know, a future meeting if we need to talk through what a working, working session would look like, but I think it'd be really cool. We could have like a joint thing with the Commission on Aging. And then just in terms of like the REO comment, I think it would be to our best interest to make sure that REO is involved in this. And then just in terms of the comments around senior center operational expenses, I'm really excited about that. I think it's a super important role of the millage to help support services that have been happening with limited support for a really long time. The state of Michigan used to like marginally fund operations at senior centers, but then they took that away. And so I think, you know, this is a, an important way that the senior mill, older adult millage can help support our centers. And then an idea for maybe confirming the designation, maybe just simple like letters of support from at least one municipality, either, you know, where it's located or like regionally, which I think shouldn't be a problem because from what I know, most of the centers like have a good relationship with the local municipalities. And then just in terms of older adult homelessness, as we're talking through like purchasing or building in partnership with the Shelter Association for more congregate adult space, like the operational gaps still exist and will exist because, you know, we only have so much room in our budget and we need to figure out like either where we're going to cut or how we're going to bring in more resources. And so if we can figure out a metrics to use on how some of the millage dollars could help support in the future operational expenses for older adults who are in the shelter system, I think that would be great. And maybe it's done kind of how the state does the per diem rate for homelessness services with shelters. And then in terms of also senior homelessness, older adult homelessness, the Senior Crisis Intervention Program since the dissolution of KOFU, again for tonight, second time, it's just, it's been underfunded. And so this has been pointed out to me recently and back in the fall. And so I just wanted to highlight that that program like historically has helped a lot of older adults prevent homelessness. And I think it's one that, you know, in an effort not to duplicate services, it would make sense for us to help support with the, the older adult millage. In terms of comments around the RFP, I appreciate all the different topics and areas that Commissioner Maschiezki highlighted. One of the thing, one of the things related to just like the process for the RFP, I know in the past, especially with a lot of the ARPA funding, like we offered some technical support. And I think for like a lot of the older, the folks that do older adult works, the organizations, like they're used to applying for grant funding, like it's the only way they can exist. I think one way to like ease the burden of that is maybe do something similar that like CMH does, adopting like approving RFPs for multi-years rather than just one, because that can just be really burdensome. And Commissioner Labarre is familiar because we sit on CMH and then approve that here as well. I already mentioned not duplicating services, but I'll say it again to duplicate that. I don't want to do, like, I think it's like, I guess, as part of like when we're listing our goals and like our, whatever, Katie, I can't remember exactly what you said. Our values, I think one of my values and I would love for at least four other commissioners to agree that we should try, we should really try not to duplicate services because duplicate services with this, like with millage dollars, it should, you know, I believe one of our guiding values, values should be maximizing support for older adults. And we can't maximize support for older adults if we're duplicating services. And so to that effect too, I'll mention that I do support the direction of having like a Director of Aging rather than a full department with like 12 staff. And then I'll just bring this up again because before we make any final decisions, like I would like personally to see the information that was gathered when the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation did the senior mapping, because I participated in that and I have not seen any of the results. And I think that's also very critical. And I know folks on the Commission on Aging would also like to see it. And then one of the other pieces, and this kind of came up at the town hall that I participated in. And there's, maybe this is something that some of us can work like as a work group with the, the REO Director. There are a lot of folks that don't qualify for like need-based services because they fall out of like, they just barely fall out of the income threshold. And so like they're not, they're not poor enough to get support, but they also don't have the financial resources to get the support. And so like there are just major gaps because of that. And it's also because these thresholds at the federal level haven't been changed and like the cost of living keeps going up and so I just want to like highlight that as something that's going to probably take a little bit of work and it might take a partnership with maybe the University of Michigan on trying to like nail that down, because some of the concerns that have been addressed is like, well, who, like what new folks are going to benefit from this millage? And who, who's like already not able to get support, not because of waitlist, just because they don't qualify. And I think that's just, that's important because there are a lot of folks that are just, you know, like working class, but on pa, like on paper, like they have enough resources, but in reality they don't because DTE bills are way too high, food's really high, prescriptions are really high, that doesn't get reflected on your paperwork when you show your income. So I think that we should figure out a way to consider all of that. So that's, those are my thoughts for tonight.
Excellent. We'll go to Commissioner Hodge, then Commissioner Rapi, then Commissioner Beeman.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be pretty brief with this because I love everything Commissioner Maschiezki said. And I remember when you presented the document to us before, and I think it really hits on a lot of the things that are core to what we're looking to do here. And thinking about how we implement it, I, I thought a lot about the Office on Aging being pretty similar in size to the Resiliency Office, almost as a similar kind of model, where when we have the Environmental Council and then we then later had the Office and then the Environmental Council is now connected to that. I, I envision a similar kind of role for the Commission on Aging. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it, but I wanted to get a more insight into your thinking around what role would the Commission on Aging have? And then what were you looking at? You mentioned when you were talking about some of the positions in it. Are we looking at something that's similar in scale to the Resiliency Office or something larger in scale? Those are the key things I want to know, but all the stuff that you listed, I would love for us to be able to do that. And I think we do need enough staff to be able to track data and to be able to work with our partners as we do funding.
Commissioner Hodge, I want to facilitate that, but do it, you know, under control, not wild and crazy. Commissioner Maschiezki, do you have a, I guess, a brief set of feedback on that?
I would, I would say that I'm, I want to be very clear, I'm not looking to create a huge bureaucracy in county government for this. I think, and I, I think in my, my own comments, I think I laid out, there are a couple of things I think that the county should be responsible for, one of which you just mentioned, that oversight kind of thing. I, I, I do think it's a smaller, I don't know what you call it, what do you end up calling it, an office, whatever it might be. I do think there's a lot of synergy though, with things that already exist. We already have OCED staff that work on nutrition programs, right? We have OCED staff that work on weatherization programs, that fits into minor home repair in my mind. So I think figuring out where those synergies are, how this fits and coordinates with OCED is important for us to think about and consider. But I'm not looking to create a big bureaucracy here. I really want to rely on resources that exist out there and the expertise that exists out there. I think there are things that we do need to, I can't give you a number of staff at this point, because I think we need to decide on exactly what we want to do, but I, I, I want to be very clear because I think there's been a lot of talk about this out in the community. I, I, there are some things that the county needs to do in terms of oversight and some basic things here, but not looking to create a huge department.
Commissioner Hodge, did you have more to say or was that? Commissioner Beeman?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for everyone's hard work on this. And I echo a lot of what's been said tonight. The one concern that I have is while I want us to plan and execute and that's important, I also want to make sure that these dollars get into the hands of the community quickly, as we're hearing about the needs of homelessness, we know about the needs of hunger, we know about the needs of our current senior centers, so would it be possible to sort of have a two-pronged approach where we identify, as we're saying, we know that there are people in the community doing this work? Is it possible to per Commissioner Maschiezki's list, address maybe those top two with funding? And then address the later needs? Again, just want to get these dollars out into the community as quickly as possible while still creating a sustainable plan.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Robbie, who I skipped there earlier.
I've indicated to Commissioner Labarre that I, I'm going to remember this moment for all eternity. So I, I guess, just in reaction to some of the comments that Commissioner Maschiezki, first of all, thank you for all your work on this and for kind of leading the board in these discussions. And I know that there was a plan that had like dollar amounts attached to it that Andrew had presented at a working session some time ago. I'm sure that the two of you collaborated on coming up with that. And I think some of your minutes or notes that you took seem to follow similar to what that presentation was. There are three things basically that I care about with this. The first is, and I've said this since the beginning, we can't be, we can't do everything and we have to focus, I think, on one to three things that we should do well and as uni, close to universally as possible. So if we want to feed people, let's try to, I want to be able to say at the end of it, there's no hungry seniors in Washtenaw County. Or there's no homeless seniors in Washtenaw County, or there's no cold seniors in Washtenaw County because we've insulated everybody's home, whatever it is. That's the first thing. The second thing is I am not adverse to the county having staff that do this. I, in fact, I am fully and militantly of the belief that we not only need a director, it doesn't have to be a whole office. I don't, I think people maybe are, I don't know, semantics, but we need a director and we need a staff of people that can ensure the public dollars are spent responsibly and that there is a public engagement process that is inclusive of as many voices in our community as possible to allocate those dollars. And then as I, you know, was saying, to make sure that there's follow-up and follow-through on how those dollars are actually spent in the end. So that you know, group of people, I don't know what that looks like. I think it has to be bigger than the Sustainability Office currently is because they don't manage a, I mean, in, in terms of the way I see the dollars too, like I really think that Commission on Aging is collaborating with that director position very closely. They're working closely together with the board, of course, but just the, the, those two organizations close. And then, you know, basically that director is tasked with you're coming up with a plan of how basically we're spending this. plan of how basically we're spending this pot of money, what is it, 12 million? 11 and a half million? I was close. I remember, you know, 12 million dollars, how we're spending that money. So it's, it's, it's more, it, the needs are greater than what the Sustainability Office currently has the capacity for. So I do think we're going to have to have more staff. And I think that as to the greatest degree possible, we should, exactly what you were saying, I agree, leverage the resources that the county already has with weatherization and other things. So maybe it's, we do weatherization, but we have a specific program for senior weatherization and we're going to invest in that and we're going to spend a ton of money on making sure every senior in Washtenaw County stays warm in the winter, whatever it is. So I, and I think that may involve hiring more staff and I think it, that's okay. So that's my second thing is it's okay to hire more county staff. The third thing I kind of already talked about, but the main, the third big thing for me is, is accountability for the money. It's making sure that if we're giving money to not the county, other organizations that were following through how those dollars are being spent, that they're being spent to fulfill essentially through an RFP process, we have specific needs that the county wants to achieve and these nonprofits are achieving those needs for us. We're not creating an entitlement program for a nonprofit. We are creating a program where a nonprofit is delivering a service that the county wants to deliver and that there is an understanding between the county and the nonprofit that those services are being delivered by them on behalf of the county. And so at the endpoint of the service delivery, the consumer needs to understand that the county is the one funding those services. Those are my three things. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I will share mine and try and be brief and then I'll open it up for a little more discussion before we wrap here. Yeah, so Commissioner Machieski, I tried to approach this from a position of looking at sort of the strategic position of the county as it relates to the fact that these are dollars that we and we alone have raised. So I say that in the context that the feds can't take them from us. And I think with the world as it is right now, for 2025, I would like to lean in as much as possible to the existing network of outside entities that are on the ground doing it to give us some time to build up candidly, capacity of expertise and to what you, Jason and you, Annie have said in terms of garnering community feedback, having some sort of iterative process and kind of demonstrating to the folks who just said yes to the ballot question that we're doing this in a thoughtful, organic way. I am largely agnostic on the questions as it relates to, to the policy of what is the most important service for older residents. I, I look to some of you at this table for expertise on that. I look to the community broadly, but I want the structure to be resourced in a way that is defensible from other layers of government and that makes, you know, the, the best possible use of those dollars to get services out to people. If the county does pick one area within older services that, that we want to be experts on and build capacity towards that, great, I can get on board with that. Another option is to lean into the role of coordinator so that Commissioner Robbie, some to what you're talking about, people want to know, one, what are you doing with our money? But two, hey, who is responsible for this that can sort of have my back if something's not working or if we need to go in a new direction? If we were the coordinator of these, so that if you had a senior who was in need of services, they would contact our person who would connect them with external entities in many cases that could get them those services, to some degree to me, that hedges our bets in terms of the, again, the feds of the state can't take the resources away. Two, we, we don't have to be expansive in what we have to provide, the underpinning funding for staffing, building, those sorts of things. But three, we're, we're, we're using existing entities, but it's a county endeavor, we're attaching the notion of a service that is paid for by taxpayer dollars with this public elected oversight entity. And we're, we're trying to get the best of, of all available worlds. But I, I'll wrap up my comments just to say, let me just be candid, I'm keenly interested in terms of how we can make this sucker work as best we can using the partners we've got out in the community, you know, the, the senior centers and nonprofits and so forth, using innovative ideas from here. But one of my end goals is to try and make whatever we get at the end of the day, maximize the resources we send towards other human services in other areas, homelessness, mental health service, pub, whatever, i- i- in a way to where the work we do with seniors helps free up resources and strategic capabilities and just time and, and attention for all the other myriad human service needs that we have. So hopefully that is flexible enough that, that, the folks can make it work. And that's in terms of my values, what I, what I'd hope to see out of this, understanding it's, it's never going to look like exactly what any of us want, but I think we can all walk away with some semblance of agreement. Are there any other Commissioner comments or discussion points on the values question? Great. If not, I'd be happy again to try and facilitate some of this at working session or if needed in, in some sort of, you know, different board iteration, but I don't, I don't want to cut it short tonight, but happy to dedicate more time in the future. See Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thank you. I think ultimately like the best way forward is going to be like having some sort of public meeting where we can get appropriate feedback from residents and Commission on Aging folks. And then after that, like a few of us put our heads together and actually propose something to the rest of our colleagues because like that's the, you know, that's the, in my opinion, the best way to get somewhere. And so I'm happy to talk more about what some sort of like joint VOC and Commission on Aging public meeting could look like.
Commissioner Machieski?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Somerville and agree as well. I, I know there's been a lot of questions in the community about, well, when is this going to happen? When's it going to get it done? And I would just like to, to say that we're, we're in the middle of, of developing this, this policy or whatever we're going to approve as, as a body here. And we want to be very thoughtful about it. We want to be very inclusive about it in terms of what gets put into it. So I know people would really like to see really quick impact and I, and I hope that we can, we can do this quickly, but we want to, we, we need to really set this up to be successful and we need to take the time to, to do that. And I think, and I guess I would maybe look for confirmation from administration that what we're doing here is really trying to set a policy that stands behind the millage. And once we get that done, then we can move forward on actually implementing some of these things. I hope that we can, we can make fast progress and keep momentum going. I know I, I've had some conversations with staff about this in addition to many other, the, the commissioners sitting around the table, but Greg, is that kind of the, the path that we're on here?
Well, it's funny, you mentioned the administrator because he had raised his hand and wanted to say something too, so.
All right. I do feel like that's the path that we're on and I, I really, I raised my hand to lean into something that you, you lifted up earlier and that is the work that's already happening in the, in the county with, through OCED. And Chair, if you're willing, I, I think it might be helpful and certainly inform the work that's happening here. If OCED could do just a short presentation on what they're currently providing in terms of senior services, again, just to inform the decision-making of this body. So if you're willing to entertain that at a, at a, a future meeting, I, I think Tony's in the audience, I, I think we could, she could put something together that will help candidly inform the work that you guys are doing.
Absolutely. And I, I, I suspect the sooner we can do that, the, the more we can keep it top of mind.
Think she's ready to go with that whenever you're ready.
You're meaning in the future, not tonight? Okay. I just, I, I thought so, Greg. I just, I just wanted to, wanted to be sure. And I, I will just say something, sorry to butt in, but I looked over at Yusuf, he and I, when, when we first started serving together the first time around, you know, the use of subcommittees of the board with an explicit purpose and, and timeline. I know we've, we've done that in, 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 in the past, but I think of the roads funding subcommittee back in 13, 14 and, and then that, you know, kind of grew into its own thing in, in, in boards to, that, that came. So whatever mechanism folks want to do, great, we will facilitate space and time here soon to keep this going at working session. Any other Commissioner comments on this item? Great. I will open up then, any items for current or future discussion? Okay. I have one very briefly, but before I get to it, just a quick logistical question, Chair. Do you want to take any break, a time limited break? What would you, what would you prefer to do in terms of heading to the next meeting?
Thanks, Chair. Chair, Chair. I think everybody probably could use a little, what's it called? What do we call this? We don't call it a bathroom break anymore. We call it a what? A bio break. I'm just gonna, I'm never calling it that again. I'm going to call it a bathroom break. I think everybody probably could use a little moment to stretch their legs and use the loo and maybe we can be back in 10 minutes.
Great.
12 minutes, we'll come back at 7:30.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I, I just, yeah, well, I just very briefly want to say, I am cognizant of that, but I'll, I'll just say briefly for, for current discussion, one, I did send out an email earlier this afternoon, just trying to lay out broadly how I hope to, you know, run these meetings and that is subject to, to what you all would like. But two, I just wanted to say, I do think it's important that for the last two years, I thought Commissioner Somerville ran this meeting in excellent fashion and that's something that I think we don't always take just a moment to say. And so I, I hope to emulate Annie in terms of how I run this meeting and, and, and do my best there. But Commissioner Somerville, thank you for your, your leadership here in the last two years. It's appreciated. So enough of that. I'm sorry. I, I, I know you did and so I, I appreciate it. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Great. No, no need for, well, we are adjourned. We'll see you at 7:30.
It's an order, not debatable. I have to say it.
I thought you got to vote in adjournment.
Oh, my God. Oh, my goodness. Oh, yes.
By unanimous consent, adjourned by.
By unanimous consent, adjourned by.
Okay, everyone. Okay, I've got to turn me on. Hello, hello. Hello? Am I, am I live? Am I loud? I don't think I'm on it either. Hello? All right, let's get moving. I'm a minute late. Usually I'm on Irish time, except for when it comes to a board meeting. Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting of January 22nd, 2025. At this time, uh, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Commissioner Robbie said everybody was quiet, except for me. I feel like it's very important to be saying that pledge extra loud for the next few years. Ashlyn, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner LaBar.
Here.
Commissioner Light. Commissioner Matyevsky.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ashlyn. Um, at this time, we'll open up the floor for public participation. So anybody who's in the room, feel, um, free to come forward to the lectern. Uh, you have three minutes to give public comment. Um, there are little lights that indicate you're, you know, ready, steady, go on greens. You're nearing your end time. Start wrapping it up and red means stop. Um, if you go beyond the three minutes, I will stop you just in my Libran attempt to keep everything fair for everybody. Hello, welcome to public comment.
Thank you. Um, my name's Gretchen Driskell, and I'm the new Water Resources Commissioner for Washoe County. And I just wanted to come before this august body and also our citizens of our county to introduce myself and share my contact info, which I still haven't memorized. So my, uh, work cell is, um, 734-395-7329. And as you all know, the standard for the email is Driskell, which is spelled D R I S K E L L G for Gretchen. That Driskell G at washon.org. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you to serve our residents. I'm not going to take three minutes. I just wanted to say hello and I, um, look forward to seeing a lot more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for a public comment?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Haley, Ipsy Township. It's nice to be able to speak, you know, if I'm coming out this way, might as well come here and say something. Uh, on the senior millage. One thing I would suggest is what I've done is when I'm out, I've actually stopped and talked to seniors and say, hey, you know about the senior village and, and asked them some questions. And one question I asked them, well, what would you like to see done with it? The response, I guess, well, that's a good question. What I would suggest is you go back to your constituent cities, townships, and actually have a township call and ask your seniors, what would you like to see done with the money? Ask them. I'm pretty sure you'll come up with some commonalities amongst all the, you know, area with Washoe County. And that's the ones you probably should focus on, the ones that is within common of all the areas of the county. Another thing I like to speak on is the Ipsy Township Attorney has been keeping track of an incident that occurred in Ipsy Township on township property on October 8th, where one of the, uh, employees were basically threatened with his life, the gun. And since then, he's been doing some digging, has had some contact with prosecuting attorney and stuff like that. But one of the charges that wasn't charged is a felony firearm. This man was already convicted of first degree sexual conduct involving a minor. Was on parole, cut his tether off, so it was such. When this event occurred. And since then, especially last night's meeting, you mentioned that he pulled, uh, you know, firearm gun crimes in the last year and looked at, at him. And he said in his opinion, 30, 30 to 45 of those cases should have had the felony firearm charged, charged. They weren't. And if, as all commissioners, you should feel concerning about the safety of your constituents in your districts. About that if the good law enforcement people we have are doing their jobs and the prosecuting office or something on the other end is dropping the ball. It is not helping either of us. And apparently I found out at the same time that Ipsy Township is the area of the county that has the highest incidence of firearm crimes. So you can see my concern is police are doing the work, somebody's dropping the ball. I think you guys should start asking some questions and doing the same contact, the Ipsy Township Attorney, and ask what information he's dug up. Because I think, uh, what I've learned is people like to say one thing. I'm the most trustful honest guy you ever know. And people turn their backs and say, he's not the most honest, trustful, honest guy, you know? Because they will tell you what you want to hear. Just, uh, tell you what they, you want to hear. And that's pretty much it. If you all could look into that, I'd be grateful. Because I've been hearing it every Ipsy Township meeting from the.
Jeremy, I'm going to have to stop you there. That's the red light blinking.
What's that mean?
That means your time is up.
Oh, does it?
Yep.
Oh, then the count started going up. My bad.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the room for public comment? Ashley, is there anyone online for public comment?
There is no one online, Chair.
Oh, fantastic. I mean, not fantastic, get people here, but it speeds us along. Um, Commissioner, follow up. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, there you are. Thanks, Jeremy, for coming again. Uh, always nice to see you. I got you an email earlier today too about buying time for coffee, so take a look at that when you get a chance. Uh, I remember when that incident occurred and there have been some other incidents also at the Township Civic Center. Uh, I'll have a conversation with the prosecutor to learn more and, uh, I'll take it from there. But thanks for making us aware of your concerns.
Any other commissioners? Okay, uh, I'm looking to see if, uh, oh, as always, thank you for people coming out for public participation. I actually, as much as I said, oh, good, I actually look forward to hearing from people and it's nice when people come and let us know about concerns in the community and introduce themselves to us. So thank you. Welcome, Gretchen. Uh, liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Commissioner LaBar.
Mr. Chair, uh, we did have the continuum of care retreat, uh, I want to say last week. And, uh, good session, uh, more to come in terms of, uh, interactions with our board and with the community more broadly. Uh, but I did want to thank, uh, OCED for hosting and walking us through some of the strategic planning that has both occurred and in ahead. And note that, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I could be wrong that none of my, um, assignments have met this year. Um, and so I, I don't really have updates, but I, because I serve on the C, CMH Board, I just wanted to, um, really just uplift the work that the PATH team has done this week. Not to minimize any of the work that some of our county administrative team have done to help, um, with capacity for folks who are, who are unhoused, that camp, um, and shout out to Ashley Hall. Um, she's done a great job and, um, any support from administration around that, thank you. But, um, the PATH team has been out in the cold, actually going to find folks because they know where people are camping. Um, and I think like we all know how cold it was. Um, I just, it, it is, they do a critical service for the county. And I don't know that everyone at, like, is aware that they're out there looking and identifying, and especially in bad weather, making sure that everybody is, um, kept warm. And so just wanted to say thank you for that. And then the other thing that, um, the, I wanted to kind of share about CMH, um, and in particular, some millage, um, funding. Um, there's been some really great work done in my district to help accommodate, um, just some needs around, uh, like nutrition access and just like helping people like gather who are otherwise, you know, just alone. Um, Chittister Place in my district and Town, um, Center, um, have many, um, like CMH users, um, and just older adults, um, lower income, older adults. And there is an organization in my district that had, that began providing community meals once a week to these, um, residents. And they like have mostly ran on, um, donations. And so CMH and, um, the county administrator, uh, came together around, um, like matching support that we had already been giving from the county administrator. Um, and so I just wanted to also thank, uh, CMH for, um, like, I guess agreeing to help fill a gap in, um, a part of the county that we know is identified, um, in low opportunity and in spaces of multi-unit housing where people, um, do not have a lot of support. Um, and so I just wanted to appreciate CMH again and the county administrator and highlight the collaboration between, um, us and them. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Somerville. Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you. Uh, mine is a very small update, but before I give the update, echoing Commissioner Somerville sentiments, PATH team, incredible. They probably do some of the most important work in the county, so thank you for highlighting them. Commissioner Somerville, uh, the quick thing I wanted to mention here in River Watershed Council is there's a proposal to increase their per capita dues. So just want everybody to be aware of that. It may be buried, but it might come down the road. It's not a large increase. It's, we're talking not very much money, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up.
Great. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Oh, Commissioner Somerville has another one for us.
Sorry, I forgot to add like an important detail to my last comment about CMH and county administration getting together to help meet a need. Um, the organization that's doing the work is actually, it's, it's called Kayla's Kitchen. And it's in honor of Lisa Barfield's, um, late daughter. And the Barfield family is, um, kind of a big deal in Ipsilani. And so I just wanted to share that she's kind of carrying on the legacy that her, um, family has kind of always had, is doing really great things in the community. And so I just wanted to mention who is behind that, Lisa Barfield. Um, she is amazing and I would invite anybody if they want to join me to see, um, the gathering and eat a meal, um, at either Chittister or Town Center. You're welcome to join me.
Thank you. It doesn't look like there are any other liaison reports at this time. Commissioner Hodge, I'm always going to ask you for a liaison report in the future, since this was sort of your baby, getting people to bring them to us.
No, I could give one.
Anything today, it's okay, but I might pick on you.
I do have one.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank, thank you, because I'm, I'm really glad to be able to continue, all of us giving the liaison reports. I've only had one so far, and it was Food Policy Council. Uh, it, it went well. Um, you know, there, uh, I'm going to start attending their executive committee meetings too. Um, because they're looking to be able to move forward with some of the items that are on their, uh, policy proposal. That they, they've talked to us quite a bit about it and they want to have a working session or come give their annual report. Um, their policy priority list covers all the way from like school board level up to state and federal. I've talked to them about like narrowing the focus down to county government, or at least achieving those ones before moving on to some of the other ones. So they made some, um, significant progress last year and there's a lot more that they're planning to do, uh, this year. And that's why I'm going to start going to their executive meetings.
That's great. Food Policy Council is always super organized and has really well laid out goals.
Well, we have a great staff person from the Health Department. Uh, shout out to the Health Department over there. It's not staff person, but it's Jimena, so shout out to Jimena.
That's great.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Um, Commissioners, if you will allow me to take something, uh, out of the order on the agenda. Um, this will be par for the course if we pass the board rules later this evening. But, um, I'd like to move up the report from the, um, county administrator to now. Um, because he has the Mina Economic Development Trip Report. Um, the, this group of people is at the meeting now. I'd like to try to free them to go home and not have to stay through the whole meeting. I don't even need a support. Apparently this is within my power. The newfound power I have to, to move around the agenda. Administrator Dill, it's all you.
Well, Chair, thank you for the grace in, in moving the agenda. Commissioners, I, I want to just say thank you for authorizing the trip to the Middle East and North Africa. I'm joined this evening by Deputy County Administrator Andrew DeLu, our Director of OCED, Tony Kaume, and Bilal Hamood, who is the Executive Director of the Arab American Chamber of Commerce. I know he's in the audience. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the grace and the, uh, attention you pay to our forming the partnership, partnership between Washoe County and the Arab American Chamber. I think there will be an opportunity in the future for us to continue to strengthen that partnership. So thank you so much. Tonight, we just wanted to give you guys just an update on what is happening, uh, what happened on our trip and what we think our next steps are. So Andrew, I'll turn it over to you. And also, Andrew, I think you may have a slide on our trip to DC on January 10th. So also wanted to, to, uh, to lift that up as well.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. Um, and actually, uh, we were joined by one other, uh, person as well, Akhman Chabani, who is the founder, uh, and Chair of the Board of the American Arab Chamber of Commerce, and he works very closely with the law. Um, we invited them here tonight just to speak a little bit about their organization, what brought them to, to plan and organize this. Um, and so we'll turn it over to them, uh, and then Tony and I will speak a little bit more about what we did while we were overseas. So.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you for having us today. Since I'm the Chair, I have, I do have an override, uh, power in this case. Thank you again. Uh, my name is Ahmed Shabani. I am the Chairman of the Board and the Founder of the Arab American Chamber of Commerce. We were founded in 1992. Uh, it's been a long journey, I guess, you know, so I'm a volunteer, obviously, so. It's been a long journey, I guess, you know, so I'm a volunteer, obviously, so we represent over 8,000 members and across not only Michigan, but also we have quite a bit of members nationally because who we represent and who we are as in our mission. We're kind of a unique organization. We're not a typical local Chamber of Commerce. Our reach is much larger. In our mission, we just focus on a specific mission is not only to advocate for our members, but also to promote trade between the Middle East and the MENA region and our region. Our region primarily is Michigan and our surroundings. So we have held these missions since 1998. I've been going to the Middle East since then. Last mission I was on, visit, was 2017. We felt this mission specifically is more needed because of, first, our absence due to, obviously, COVID comes in the picture again, and in fact, we had to reconnect. My relationship with the Undersecretary Jose Fernandez, that really encouraged the trip and enhanced it. Him and I had worked together in the MENA region, North Africa specifically, in 2012, built this relationship. And we wanted to, this relationship to really be more fruitful in this perspective, right? He is leaving, unfortunately, you know, due to the change of administration, but his leadership was very much appreciated. So we decided that this, this, this trip specifically only will bring people from the US government perspective, from the State Department, and the local leaders from the counties and the governor's office. And I do thank you again for having Sean. And so Andrew and Tony, they were great, you know, representatives for your county. And I think there's a lot of, lots of prospects. I guess, you know, trips like these don't just come back with a basket of results, right? And the beginning of this conversation is just to building on for future trips. And we hope that you, when we come back with something, hopefully you can, you know, authorize it again, because this is how we're going to begin our conversation. There's so much to do in the Middle East, you'd be surprised, and these guys will report to it. I'm going to stop here since this is three minutes. I'm going to, I'm just joking. But I'll have, you know, Bilal, who is our Executive Director, who'll give you a little more report, and we can, we're more ready to engage in discussion about this. How, what it means for our region and how we can all participate in this. Thank you again for your time.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you, Chair, for moving the section up. We were planning on, you know, bouncing back and forth between the bar and grabbing some good tacos. I know they're great, so this works out quite nicely. On behalf of the American Arab Chamber of Commerce and all our members, all the staff and chamber members who support our organization, I want to thank you all for having us here today and for allowing us to borrow Andrew and Tony as we truly were able to do something historic for our state. To give you some background, this delegation was meant to represent Michigan at all levels of government and ensure that we built these relationships to set a foundation for future collaborations, investment opportunities, but really set the tone for how organized our state was, at what level we were from a talent and education and coordination. That's the big thing. The last time one of these major trips happened, it was 15, 20 years ago. We're talking about pre-smartphones. So where we're at and where we are as a state and how we're set up to be globally competitive is completely different. And so when we had this meeting and decided we were going to put this delegation together, the idea was to have county, local, and federal representatives, including the state, where we were able to bring Ben Marchiano, who represents the state's Chief Innovation Department, but being able to take all these levels of government and have these conversations. And let me tell you, it was endurance-heavy. These folks were in meetings as early as 7:00 AM and ended at 8:00 PM, and it was back-to-back-to-back. And I want to give them a, just a personal shout-out, perfect attendance. Every single meeting, they were one of the three participants of the entire delegation with perfect attendance. And that showed their commitment, their dedication, and their endurance, because that's the spirit of Washtenaw County and that's the spirit of state of Michigan. And so they did a great job representing, and I'll tell you a little bit about some of the takeaways between the three nations that we visited. So we had gotten to really take charge of these conversations, and that's a big shout-out to the Undersecretary for creating the space. Traditionally, how these meetings go, you have the State Department leading the way, they set the tone, and you're kind of there, you're participating. Undersecretary Fernandez knew what he was doing. He was creating a space for Michigan, for our community, to have the center stage. So it would be an introduction, one to two minutes, and then handoff. And then we got to set the tone, we got to set the narrative and the agenda, and that is game-changing. And so between Oman, which is a young and hungry environment for us to collaborate with, Qatar, which is a growing and, you know, huge opportunities of the type of meetings we had, and of course, UAE between Abu Dhabi, Dubai, setting up the meetings with the innovation hubs, with the free trade zones, with all these partners that are really operating at the highest of levels. Logistics being built out, fully vertically integrated for their shipping, receiving. Give you just one example, one of the meetings we had was with a group who, in the middle of the meeting, the CEO picked up the phone, yeah, okay, no problem. Hung up, sorry, we just closed on McLaren this morning. Anyway, moving on, as an aside, they bought this large vehicle company. So like, some of the meetings were at this level, but many were at this level in which we could engage. And I want to point out one in particular in which I think Washtenaw stood out. Core42 being the, one of the largest AI and data tech, data center manufacturers in Dubai acted as a huge gateway for us to tap into that sort of network. And between Tony and Andrew being represented at that meeting, they sparked interest in the creation of data centers in Washtenaw County, taking advantage of brownfield property opportunities, to the point where we were getting follow-ups from their, from this agency. Normally, these meetings happen and, you know, you have to really push for follow-ups. They were the ones reaching out and wanting this kind of work to be done because they set such a strong tone for the state and for the county. And so instrumental in having Washtenaw County present. So thank you for allowing this representation to occur. And this will be a theme for the rest of the evening, I'm sure, but a huge shout-out to Ashley for creating the connection and making this opportunity happen. Her and I both are in Leadership Detroit together and been really impressed with her work. But thankful for you all for creating the space for this to occur. Many more opportunities to come. And I really do hope that we get to share some of those results soon. But in general, Andrew and Tony, thank you again so much for joining us and thank you all for having us here today. We very much appreciate it.
So as you all can tell, we were in very good hands, excellent hosts the entire time. We do have photos and we'll just walk you through a bit of the agenda. We'll move relatively quick and want to be respectful of the evening, but happy to take any questions that you have along the way. Ashley, if you could pull up the presentation. Yeah, wow. So that's Doha. That is the first day of the first part, well, the first full day. Followed a very long, very long trip. It's far away from here. Sorry. Several.
Yes, quite a few.
And then on the way back. So you already heard quite a bit about the purpose of the trip and we won't repeat that. But, but do, you know, I think certainly for our part, found a lot of value in being there, not only, you know, being able to learn more about the chamber, what the US State Department's doing, but also from our region, you know, I think built a lot of good relationships with the other counties that were also represented. But in terms of the delegation, Tony, if you want to.
Sure. We had a lot of representatives, as Bilal mentioned earlier, from the variety of counties in our area, as well as cities, and being able to have the State Department and the Michigan Municipal League with us. And so that was our delegation as we were at the Doha Forum. So just wanting to share, and you'll have this available to you if you want to actually look at all the individual names.
Yeah. But, but great, great group. There are, as was mentioned, some additional people from Washtenaw County who were also on the trip, not as governmental representatives, but in another capacity. Doug Song in the middle there, I think many of you probably know Doug, a great traveling companion. And then just to, over Doug's left shoulder, but right, if you're looking at it, is Ben Marchiana, and that's who Bilal mentioned earlier, who's now working at the MEDC.
So it was essentially a nine-day trip, just to let you know, two of which were spent traveling in the beginning. We left on Friday, December 6th, and didn't arrive until the evening of Saturday, December 7th. So did want to highlight the beautiful airports that we had the opportunity to participate in, not only as destination points, but also as meeting locations. So for a lot of dignitaries who arrive in the Middle East at various airports, a lot of those important VIP meetings happen right there at the airport.
And just climate-wise, great time of year to travel to that part of the world. Temperatures mid-70s most of the time, much more, more, especially compared to where, what we left, but also compared to what you would find there in the summer.
Our first day of actual full-day meetings took place on Sunday, December 8th. They work on Sundays, that is a normal workday. That was in Doha, Qatar. We had the chance to spend time, of course, with Jose Fernandez, the Undersecretary of State, who we had the opportunity to have dinner with the night before as well when we arrived. And we had breakfast with US Ambassador to Qatar, Timmy Davis, who briefed us on the economy in Qatar and relationships with the individuals we would be meeting.
And then also just notable on this day, this is the day that Bashar al-Assad fled Damascus. And so we had a briefing and the ambassador spoke about that somewhat in terms of the evolving situation in the afternoon when we were at the Doha Forum. The session I was in actually had a chance to hear from the Turkish Foreign Minister, Turkey and Syria, share a very long border, learned a little bit more about that while we were over there, but very much like a rapidly evolving international situation that we were present for.
And the session I was in at the Doha Forum focused on AI, not only its benefits in regards to business, but its benefits to humanity and how it can actually be used for the good of individuals not taking their jobs.
Just some more about Doha. More meetings. Between Tony and I and the photo on the left is Mike Abdullah, counterpart of ours from Oakland County, who really works in foreign direct investment. They've got a very sophisticated economic development function over there, and we're looking more to talking with him and his counterpart. You heard Akhmed talk about Sean, Sean Carlson, who's in the County Executive's Office over there, and then the Doha Forum, of course.
Day four was in Mascot, Oman, and we had the opportunity to attend the 15-year anniversary of the US Oman Free Trade Agreement, which isn't really something I think that's well-known and really has a lot of advantages for industry that wants to locate in either location and do trade back and forth in regards to the ease that that can be conducted with because of the trade agreement.
Yeah, a big part of what Oman is looking to do in terms of their development is really look at their location in the region. They're very close to India at the mouth of the Gulf and do a lot of like materials handling, airports, ports, logistics. And so some of the opportunities that we learned about there that we've tried to advance a little bit since coming back are thinking about things like relationships with Khalid Air and some other, other local places where we have expertise in those fields.
And that was an example that you can see of one of the meetings in an airport, the fact that many of them happened there. And we got opportunity to meet with many of the various sheiks who are involved in government with their positions that they hold. And we had a brief lull in between meetings, of which we were given a private tour of Oman's Royal Opera House, which was beautiful.
And there's more photos if you are interested, not in this presentation, but. Later that evening, we were hosted at the Ambassador's residence, Ambassador Esra Grimah. She had us, as well as several members of the American Chamber over that evening, and so got to learn a little bit more about the business environment there and talk about, you know, why, why some of the other people who we were talking to decided to set up shop there, what brought them to Oman, and the benefits of the free trade agreement for them.
And we felt that Oman was exceedingly welcoming. All of the countries were wonderful and gracious, but Oman just really went above and beyond in regards to their welcoming stance of us from meeting us at the airport and escorts to a private dinner that was hosted that evening by the Commerce, Industry and Investment Promotion Minister, which was quite lovely, before we had to fly out yet again that night around 11 o'clock. And I think we arrived after midnight in our next destination.
Yeah, so days five and six are when we arrived in UAE. And the first part of our trip there was in Abu Dhabi. There are seven Emirates. So Abu Dhabi is the largest of them in terms of the geography, and that's where we spent our first day. The top photo there is Tony and I overlooking one of the many islands that makes up the city in the region of, well, the most populous part of that region. But many meetings over the course of this day, again, as you heard about from Bilal, in terms of trying to understand the different things that that company, that their different investment vehicles are looking to support in terms of attracting talent to them as well as investments elsewhere in the world.
We met with a number of leaders of Mubdala, which is in Abu Dhabi, a sovereign investment company that has a really diverse portfolio, both in the UAE and abroad. Bilal covered, I think, our meeting with Core42 for us.
And then finally, we were hosted for a meeting at the US Embassy, Abu Dhabi as well.
We had the opportunity to go to an amazing mosque, of which was such a unique and spiritual experience, I think, for everybody on the trip. And it was the Grand Mosque, and totally beautiful. We have many pictures of that, if anybody would like to see that. We also had the opportunity to see the Louvre, that version that is in that country, and then also New York's University's Abu Dhabi campus.
And that's something that we saw pretty frequently, where these almost like joint ventures where they, you know, people from Abu Dhabi would look to bring in other very high-profile organizations like the Louvre, like NYU, and have them establish there as a means of accelerating the speed at which they're able to do things like museums or educational institutions. So day seven, then, we moved, we went to Dubai, and Dubai was exceptionally overwhelming, save for this country boy. But you can see up in the top there, that was taken at the foot of the Burj Khalifa, huge development, is the tallest building in the world, I think half a mile tall, if I've got my numbers right, approximately, but just absolutely gigantic. And, and all of those other buildings there would probably be, you know, the tallest buildings in Michigan by a good amount, just to give you a sense of the scale. But it was, it was a Thursday evening when we were out there, which is typically, you know, almost like a weekend night here in terms of the structure of their workweek. But more meetings there. The top, well, the first photo underneath the skyline is actually from Thursday. We took a trip to Ras Al Khamia, which is one of the other seven Emirates, and met with the sheik there. We were hosted at his palace. He is actually a graduate of the University of Michigan. Back, I kid you not, yeah, he graduated back in the 70s. And so it has been a while, but he is familiar with our fair county.
The delegation also had the opportunity to tour Guardian Glass Factory, which is one of the world's largest glass manufacturers. And ironically, of course, had a parent company that's located right here in Auburn Hills.
And then the final photo that you'll see there is a tour of DP World. They are a major port operator. They, about 10% of the world's international cargo flows through ports that are operated by DP World. That was especially of interest to our counterparts from Wayne County, who are looking at some projects to redevelop the Detroit Port along the Detroit River.
Day seven, of course, in the evening, gave us the opportunity to spend some time bonding with our counterparts. And this is about the point where people were starting to get sick, as was mentioned, because we were going non-stop from early in the morning to sometimes, you know, midnight or 1:00 AM with flights and things along those lines. So you're going to start to see the photos, the number of people will start to thin out because people's immune systems were starting to break down about this point.
Yeah, just shout-out to him. And I got some excellent counseling from our Health Department, though, prior to travel, so maybe, I don't know, maybe a relation.
But that's the Burj Khalifa, the tall building that you see on the right-hand side at the bottom, and that was actually made with Guardian Glass. So that's another point, but yes.
Yeah, and then, so days eight were more unscheduled and we had some time to do more cultural events while we were over there. And again, you know, our hosts were excellent in terms of showing us the sights, but the top photo there, we took a trip out to the desert and were able to see sunset in the desert, you know, after spending the afternoon out there. And then from there proceeded to go to a show before wrapping up the evening.
And Friday, December 13th, was our one day that was unscheduled without meetings to give everybody a chance to rebound health-wise and be ready for their full day of traveling to return back to the United States on Saturday, December 14th. And we're really excited about the collaboration opportunities, not only with the international connections that we made, but also with the other delegates we met on the trip, and we're already starting to talk about what we might be able to do together with some of our other county counterparts, our peers.
Yes. And so as you, as Greg kind of spilled the beans on, we did have a subsequent invitation to, and this was from Undersecretary Fernandez to attend one of the last meetings that he hosted at the State Department. So this occurred on Friday, January 10th, and Greg, I would defer to you if you've got any comments you would want to say on this.
Yes, for the Commissioners and the organization, Andrew was a gracious tour guide. He did have us walking through. He did have us walking through frigid temperature or what, couple of miles to get to our destination. It was a very long day. Our flight got canceled, what, twice or delayed twice? So it was a long day, but really wonderful dialogue with with our partners. And I'm optimistic that as we move forward, there will be significant opportunities for the southeastern Michigan corridor.
And and so this particular one was was organized mostly by the Michigan Municipal League Foundation. They have this sub national diplomacy project that they have been working on in coordination with the under secretary's office. And I will say, my my sense was really kind of a push, given the administration change and making sure that that's a project that's successful. So we're really excited about it. Expect to be able to talk to you more about, you know, the county's future involvement in that work.
And again, want to express our thanks to Bilal and Ahmed and the American Arab Chamber of Commerce for organizing our delegation trip. They really went above and beyond to make sure that things ran absolutely smoothly for all of us.
And to all of you as well, you know, I think for.
Thank you for sending us. It was a like a once in a lifetime experience. It was really fantastic. Thank you.
So it's certainly not the last you'll hear of it. You know, we're we're working on recommendations and some things to think of in terms of what we can do with the learnings, but but happy to take any questions that you might have tonight. Or or not.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Commissioner Robbie.
Just will briefly say thank you both and thank you to our guests who have joined us today for creating this opportunity for Washtenaw County to participate. I think it's obviously very important to have that international connection. And I appreciate the work that, you know, we we've all done around this table to build, you know, build up those international relationships that we've had. But I think it also builds a relationship between Washtenaw and Wayne County. And I think that maybe is even more important or equally important. And I hope that we can continue those relationships moving forward and the relationship with the chamber, you know, moving forward as well. So hopefully there are opportunities for us to, maybe that could be some of the outcomes too, is opportunities to collaborate locally with with that sort of stuff as well. The one, one thing I will, I have to say, I've already told, you know, Bilal this, but next time you guys go, you got to go to North Africa. So and and if you do, I'll be there, you know, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Beeman.
I think Commissioner Scott might come too.
I'm there. You could, nobody could have told how enthusiastic I was watching that presentation. Commissioner Beeman, sorry.
Same thing, more of a comment. Just thank you so much for bringing back this knowledge and making these connections and pushing through these really long days in these new environments. Appreciate that. I'm also excited about the partnerships that are going to come out of this again internationally, but also locally. And I do have to call out, I saw the village of Kasopolis was on there. So for those that don't know, with my economic development background, the Edward Low Foundation is actually located in Kasopolis, Michigan. So it's an entrepreneurial organization. He's the inventor of cat litter. So anyway, but just excited to see all these different partnerships.
Very cool. Commissioner Hodge.
Well, thank you both for the presentation and for going. And thank you to the organizers of the trip and making this happen for us. And thank you, Ashley, for also supporting and making it happen. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the county and I hope we can continue to stay engaged in this. And I know there was a lot of effort that went into planning it and a lot of last minute stuff for both of you to be able to make it work. So really grateful for the two of you going and having perfect attendance. I mean, that's what we expect from Washtenaw County. So that's wonderful. So thank you so much. Really looking forward to diving into the report that you gave us and looking forward to chatting more about it. And the pictures look great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to just add at the end, I'm sorry, you guys are going to sit down. Wait, but wait, there's more. Thank you very much for going because I I think it was a hard time. It's a hard time of year. It's a busy time of year anyway. And you both sort of put things aside and you got yourselves there. Ashley, thank you for like making that connection and getting this going for us. I think it's enormously exciting. I am very excited to see recommendations that come out of it, to see how we can continue to further this. I think we will have to make that our own priority going forward for at least the next four years. I think we should. I think that as Commissioner Robbie said, the connections that we made also with the other counties around us are so important. So I think if we think of ourselves as a region, we can be unstoppable and this was part of that. And I want to hear what you had for dinner at all of the other conferences. That seems like kind of a lot of fun and see more pictures maybe when it's not like business time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Dell.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to close by thanking our friends from the Arab American Chamber. Thank you so much. I think I speak for this board in saying that we have developed a friendship that we hope to cultivate as we move forward.
Thank you again for your support and we're very excited. But I mean, something to really focus on is the camaraderie that was built among the leaders, among the counties. And so this is where we have to invest first. I think we should not be working as individually as a region, but be all of us could be one region. And we should not be replicating efforts into that.
So I just want to close by thanking the board again for authorizing this trip. This I think will pay dividends for a long time to come. So thank you so much and that will conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a special order of business and we have no special orders of business. So I'm looking to see if anybody would like to move the appointments.
I'll move the appointments.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns or comments on appointments? I don't see any. Is this a voice vote? It's a roll. Okay. All right. Ashlyn, you're up.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Appointment's passed.
Thank you. I'll just say, since they passed, you will see the resolution appointing commissioners, subboards, committees and commissioners, that there are still some holes. So I implore you all to look at those holes and see if you can step into the breach. It would be helpful to make sure that those committees, commissions and agencies are getting the attention that they deserve. Would anybody like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Forward.
Okay. Any discussion? That's a voice vote. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Great. That item passes. Before we move to the resolutions, I know that it is in the section of the final reading, but we're going to take out the supplemental F, just for anybody moving resolutions when we get there. And we'll present that hopefully at the meeting, the next meeting. Okay. Would anybody like to move the first reading, please? Commissioner Labar.
Sure. Chair, under first readings, one, A, resolution ratifying the application of the state and local cybersecurity grant from IT. B, a resolution ratifying the application for the F, the Bureau of Justice FY24 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Site-Based Program Grant, your office. C, resolution classifying the BOC Communications and Operations Manager.
Support.
Anything for separate consideration? Any discussion on any of these items?
Yeah, I think on item A and B, obviously there's no county match and so seems straightforward. But on item C, I just wanted to say I really appreciate this being on the agenda. And I guess I hope that at a board meeting soon, we'll also be approving an additional position for board operations. But I am in full support of this and I appreciate that it's on this agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbie.
Yes, so item C, being a component of a larger plan, which I'm excited about and understanding from whispering to the administrator just now that we're going to have future discussions about this and that another proposal will be coming before us. I don't know if the administrator wants to speak.
I mean, you could keep going if you want, but it looks like the administrator has something to say, but he can.
He can go first and then I can fill in my other thoughts.
I just want to say that, yes, there's more to come on this. There's been a lot of dialogue between myself and the chair. And we have a strategy and plan that we will bring back to this board for for action.
So and I think what I was just going to say is reflecting back to 2013 when I was chair and we started for the first time for the four year budget process. One of the, one of the things that I advocated to get into that budget in 2013 was the creation of this position that Ashley currently has. And for many years it remained unfilled. I think for three or four years it was unfilled. And then finally it got filled and we have had several folks in that position. The vision that I had at the time and something that I advocated for in the last budget process, obviously, was that really it is important for this Board of Commissioners to have appropriate staff to make sure that we have folks that are not only helping us to interact with our constituents, but also helping us to prepare for these board meetings, to write resolutions and interface with the administrator, who of course also works for the board, as does corp counsel. But having a staff of people that are sort of, you know, directly helping us to do the work of county commissioner is of absolute importance and it's something that I advocate, like I said, advocated for over 10 years ago. And I am so excited that our chair, along with the administrator, has made it happen. Finally, after all these years, I feel like this is a dream come true. I'm so excited to see this happen. And I hope that we don't stop even with one position. I I do actually think that we need more positions. I'm going to take one for now. That's what I asked for and pushed for and advocated for. So to see this come to be is huge. But I do, and so thank you, Chair, for your work on this. And thank you to our former chair as well for, I know I communicated a lot with you, Justin, about this. And I know that this was a long time in the making, so this is team effort, of course. Before I end my comments, specifically the person that is in this position deserves recognition because Ashley, you have done a phenomenal job. And I am so excited for you that this is involving you. That was, again, my dream as returning to the board when I talked about, you know, expanding the the this department, I guess you could call it, in the budget for, in the two year budget or the four year budget process that we had finished up last term. This was what I had hoped for, was that you would raise to a role of managing the, you know, a team of people that could help support us so that you are able to not just do that everyday, day to day work, but also to be able to think big to help us plan, to help us do like what you're doing on the seventh, you know, with that retreat. You've done an amazing job and you're very deserving of this. And I think that, you know, some people may not understand and because Washtenaw County doesn't have like generally a culture that has allowed for these types of positions to happen. But my philosophy has always been in order for government to function, we are the people's representatives. We're the people that are most directly on the ground, talking to our constituents. We need to have, we need to not only know what their, what their issues are. We need to have that opportunity to interface with them and we need to have that sort of independent mind council to be able to help us do our jobs in the best possible way. And that's what you've been doing. That's what you're going to continue to do. And now you're going to do it hopefully with some help. So very excited to support this, very excited about you and your continued role at the county. Thank you, Chair.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, I'm going to say just a little bit too about item C. And I'm also going to say a lot of really good things about Ashley. What I have seen from the time I came on the board in 2018 to now in 2024 is that what we are doing as a board is becoming way more public facing and way more sophisticated in what we're trying to do for the community. Like we have really started a more forward approach, I think. And we can't do it without somebody like Ashley, in particular, Ashley. I just think that she is phenomenal at what she does. Her organizational prowess cannot be understated. I was raised with, I mean, God bless my parents. They were like, nobody is indispensable, you know. And they said that, but like, I feel like you're indispensable. This is a really dated reference and maybe you don't know it, but do you remember radar on MASH? No, she doesn't know. Commissioner Labar knows.
What's MASH?
What's MASH? Okay, radar could anticipate what people needed before they needed it. Like, like you were like radar, but better. So I just want to say, I think this is well deserved. I am very optimistic that we're going to have a second position very soon, that it will not be three to four years. If it is, if it's up to me, it would be in the next couple of weeks that we would see this on the agenda. So we'll get moving on that and I think that it's just really going to help the people in Washtenaw County. Also, just let me remind you, in Wayne County, although I know they have a very different population, much larger than we do, those commissioners work those jobs full time and have each of them have an assistant. So two, they have two assistants? What? What? Okay, so so yes, so this is a drop in the bucket. And I think that we are really trying to, I mean, if we're going to talk about what Washtenaw County does in terms of human services and people are going to sing the praises of that, a lot of that starts here. And we need people like Ashley and the group, maybe the one or more people that she will then be the director of board operations of to help us with that. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Hodge.
I'll just be really quick because there's not much more to add based on what you said and what Commissioner Robbie has said. But very excited for this. Ashley has frequently talked about wanting to help professionalize the operations of the board using that terminology specifically. And I think that this moves us closer in that direction to be able to do that. Would love to be able to see us have additional staff beyond the one, but there is already the plan for the one and a job description and all of that that we can move forward. But I think this will help all of our operations, especially as we think about how are we going to program the, we'll round up to $12 million in funding from the village for senior services and a lot of the other work that's here. So I I would echo your sentiment that Ashley has been indispensable and very excited to be able to vote yes on this. And thank you for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Somerville.
All right. I echo everything that others have said about Ashley and her ability. You're amazing. And I guess I also wanted to say, like, one of the things that Commissioner Robbie was talking about is like other people have been in this role and like we had a high turnover in the role. I partially think because of the, just like the capacity. And while Ashley Hall can't say this, but I'll say this because I work for an elected official. Like that, like the capacity and like being supported and having like a team really does matter. And I think like, so the history that I know before my time, we had Desmond Miller was the first person in the role. And then we had Crystal Campbell, who's in the room right now. And then we had Peter. Is that correct? Do we have anyone else? Okay, so I just want to uplift all the work that they did because like I know when when my good friend Desmond had the job, it was brand new and you're trying to like manage the expectations of nine different elected officials, which is like a power struggle, right? Like in that that employee has zero power. And so I just want to uplift the fact that your job is really hard because you're answering to nine different elected officials who all have different needs and expectations of you. And that can be challenging to navigate and is like a different layer of difficult, I think, than some other jobs in public service. And so the work that you do is valued and complicated and I understand that, just like from a staffing perspective. And I just wanted to uplift that. And the others who have had your job before you too, like it's hard work. And they were also like building the ship, like the plane while they were flying it. And so just wanted to say that I'm really grateful for the people who make us better. So thank you.
Commissioner Labar.
Three things. Ashley had to echo the the comments in terms of your your skill in this role and and looking forward to this. I think it'll be particularly important in terms of navigating the intersection of human services, policymaking and constituent services. I think we'll we'll have to essentially do more shepherding of residents in some of those roles than in the past. And I'm glad we can be armed to meet that challenge. I think that's a good thing. And Chair, you'll appreciate this. I picked up a nickname in college on the college lacrosse team. Uh, my nickname in college was Radar. And so um, yeah, I, I wore glasses then too, yes. So Ashley, I think of you in higher esteem, and I appreciate it. Uh, but uh, thank you for that reference to uh, uh, to MASH. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beeman.
I'm just gonna echo what everyone else has said about how amazing Ashley is. But I'm also going to selfishly say that I'm excited for this and for the expansion of the team. It would take it a little sad now, but we're gonna have a lot of work ahead of us, especially over these next four years. And we're going to need the support. And so this is going to provide that for us. So I'm thankful for everyone at this table. And Ashley, uh, as we move into this uncharted territory.
Thank you. Um, I want to apologize. I thought you were all done talking, colleagues, which is why I went. And then you all had more. Oh, and look at Commissioner Machewski. Get in the game, Machewski.
I'm just stunned because I would never have guessed that Commissioner Labar played lacrosse. And have the nickname of Radar. Um, but I, I look forward to the work that's gonna get done through this. Um, because I think we're gonna be able to do more constituent focused work and more maybe newsletters and, and things like that. And I, I greatly appreciate the, the work that Ashley has done on behalf of many of the, many things that we've been working on. And uh, I applaud those who have been working to get this through and get this in front of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, I think we've done it now. Um, this is the first reading, so this is a roll call.
No, it was voice vote. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, God, I'm gonna get it, I swear. One would not know. I've been on this board for so long, suddenly forgetting everything. All right, a roll call vote. It's the pressure.
No, it's the, it's the voice vote. No, you said a roll call, then it.
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay.
You had it right in your head.
Perimenopause is rough, so stick with me for the next two years. Um, roll call vote. All those in favor? Voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, good. Ooh, God, moving on. Um, would anybody like to move the single reading remembering that we're pulling F? Commissioner Labar.
Nevermind. Single reading, Chair. Move uh, A, Resolution Adopting Uh Updated Board Rules. B, A Resolution Appointing Alicia M. Wilson, M.D., as Medical Examiner from the Health Department. C, Resolution Uh Amending the Two Thousand Twenty-Five Board of Commissioners Calendar. D, Resolution Accepting the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Planning Grant From OCED. E, A Resolution Improving the Mater- the Materials Management Planning Committee Bylaws. And with F having been uh polled, uh, just to move approval of claims.
Support.
Thank you. Anybody would like to pull anything for separate consideration? Uh, no, we didn't move F.
Skip it.
Yeah. Commissioner Robbie? You want to pull A? Okay. Uh, anything else? Okay, uh, any discussion on any of the items other than A? Commissioner Robbie, thank you.
I, I don't know that I have any discussion necessarily. I was having a little trouble understanding item D. If we could just get like a quick two minute, what is, what are we voting on here?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Andrew Kramer. I'm part of the homelessness team at OCED. I'm glad to be here tonight to help explain this grant. Uh, so we applied as part of a community process with a bunch of community partners, including Ozon House, Washtenaw Housing Alliance, Community Mental Health, Department of Health and Even Services. And we're fortunate enough to get this grant. Um, the grant in total is a little over four point two million dollars, of which HUD makes available up to ten percent, but starts with an initial three percent for planning purposes. Out of the remainder, uh, it gets divided up into two portions for the next two years to run projects. Uh, each of those portions, fifty percent or more of the money needs to go towards uh housing resources, so rent basically. And the remainder would go towards staffing and services. These are all her projects to serve youth and young adults experiencing homelessness under the age of twenty-five.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, that's awesome. So the hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars of this award that we're accept, we're accepting, or, yeah, we're accepting, uh, is for OCED to do planning and developing the continuing, continuum of care plan. Is my understanding that?
That's correct. So HUD requires us to develop a, a community plan by the end of April. Uh, and so we've engaged a consultant that we're hoping to hire with this money uh to lead us in a process. And this consultant's written several other community plans for this program. Um, and the goal is to gather community input and particularly input from youth and young adults with lived experience of homelessness in order to help us decide what types of projects and how those services should be designed to meet the needs of our residents.
Thank you. No further questions, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? You're free. Oh, wait, Commissioner Beeman, is it on this item too? Okay, great. Don't go anywhere yet.
Sorry, just one quick question. Um, and it, and it's okay if it's still early. I just um have a passion for Washtenaw Community College, and I know that they have a population that fits this. Are they at the table at all, or is it too early?
Oh, boy. You know, I am actually not the staff person who's worked on what we're calling our Youth Homeless Committee, which is bringing together uh stakeholders. I know there is definitely a plan to do outreach to the universities because we know there are students who experience homelessness.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I want to just drive that WCC point home because I think it opens up a lot of opportunities. There certainly there are students at both major universities um who are experiencing homelessness. But WCC opens a lot of opportunities for people in a very affordable way to help them start solid middle-class lives. Um, in particular, also their nursing program. Shout out nurses. Any other questions you guys have for Andrew while he's standing up here? Okay, now you're free. Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions on the items that have not been pulled? Okay, um, so we can do a roll call vote for that and then we'll go back to the polled item. Ashlyn, that's all you. Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes. Motion passed.
Fantastic. Okay, let's uh move our way back to item A, A Resolution Adopting the Board Rules. Um, questions, concerns, comments on this item? Commissioner Robbie.
Um, I had one and a half things. Um, I, I sort of, uh, the, the one thing, the, the one full thing um of substance is, and I do hate to bring this up, and I'm sorry for bringing it up. Uh, but the um, the travel allotments, now I'm not, I lost the page, uh, but I know that there's uh, let's see, let me try to find it now. Changing of the language uh in that. And uh fundamentally, my question is, um, God, why can I not find it? Okay, uh, subsection four of item ten A.
Oh, gosh. Oh, my gosh. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, so I, my question is simply this. How do we process the payments for these travel accounts? And I ask that only because w- item four really, in my opinion, like, we shouldn't have a situation where that's even relevant because the county should not be approving expenses beyond the budget that we have in each of our accounts. And so I'm wondering, like, we shouldn't even be allowing commissioners to overrun their budgets because there should just be a cap of how much the county allows to be spent from that budget.
I, I think that, I, I mean, I can see Administrator Dill moving sideways toward the podium. He might answer some of that question, but I feel like I can answer some of that question too, based on what we saw going forward, was that um now Brady is doing those reports for us every month where it is very clear how much that we are spending. I think that there's probably an element of hap- making sure that those reports are done consistently, sent out to us, so we know how much money we've spent. I think we have, we should be keeping track of some of that ourselves as well. But I think that the reports that Brady is doing are helping with that. But I see your point about saying like, even get into the position where like, if somebody's saying, I think some of the issue may come from that people go to a conference, we don't have to have our travel approved.
Uh, well, I guess, I guess my issue is like, what credit card is being used to purchase these things? Because we don't have a county credit card. And so if.
Okay, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna go back and now defer to the administrative part of this, I know.
Yeah, so I, I feel like the checks and balances will be in place with Brady's doing the reporting. Uh, the credit card that we're using for Commissioner Travel is Ashley's credit card. So between those two pieces, we should have the checks and balances to make sure that uh, you know, there are no uh overruns. And frankly speaking, if there are, if we get close to that, we will work through the Chair to bring it back to, to.
I, and I guess what I'm trying to say, that's really helpful, because I guess what I'm trying to say is like, the county should not be allowing the credit card to be spent past the budgeted amount. And so item four really isn't needed because there, we should never be in a position where a commissioner is spending more than their budgeted amount if it's our credit card, that, that's the county credit card that's being run.
I, I think probably what we need to do is then think about if we need to add an item um that clarifies how those funds are run. Because I think we ran into problems before when travel was being run from various accounts. If it's streamlined to one place, we won't, we will not run into those problems again.
Thank you. That is exactly what I was gonna say. Certainly, the board can, can add any, any language that they choose. But I think, given the way we've streamlined things and the checks and balances that we have in place, I don't anticipate us running into this issue again.
Commissioner Somerville.
Um, maybe so we can just get this done and not have to come revisit it. Um, we could add something now. Um, I mean, I think, I was already under the assumption that before we were booking anything, and by that I mean Ashley booking something for us, like she was looking at those reports that Brady. And so I feel like that's basically what's already happening. And so maybe in that um line, and I apologize, I don't have the item pulled up because I haven't been logged into Board Portal in a really long time. Um, and so I don't have it pulled up right now. Um, and so maybe we can just add or strike that part maybe and just add that before travel is booked, the board, the Director of Board Operations will confirm that there is available, that there are available funds to like that commissioner. And maybe we can reword it. Doesn't, like, I'm just thinking on the fly here.
It's good thinking on the fly, Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I mean, the other piece of it is, is if you're going to two or three conferences, you're gonna probably use all of it and then you just have to pay the overrun. I mean, that's, that's part of the policy. So I don't know that we need something additional that would restrict the ability to schedule it. If, you know, then you know you have to pay the overrun.
Yeah, I, I think what, by, by keeping something in there about paying for the overrun is that allows that you may go to a conference, you may spend more that may get booked before uh, an, a, a report is generated. And say, if I get to seven thousand one hundred and Ashley's booked it, and then Brady runs the report next month, and it's like, oh, Katie, you went to seven thousand one hundred, I have to then pay that one hundred back. So, I mean, because what if the plane ticket to go to someplace is what puts me over the edge? So I think we should, we need to keep that part of the language. But I don't have an objection if we thought we wanted to add language that said all travel will be run through the um Director of Board Operations account. If that makes sense.
Chair, we can do that. I'm not sure that that's necessary. Uh, but uh, you know, whatever the board wants, we will absolutely do. I've, I will say one more time, I feel like that we have the checks and balances in place, and this will not be an issue moving forward. We meet on a regular basis to talk about these kinds of budgetary things. We have a meeting once a week in this office to talk about the care and feeding for the nine of you. So I'm, I'm not anticipating, I, I could pick a better word, but yeah, yeah. See, I'm not anticipating an issue moving forward.
Hey. Any, Commissioner Robbie?
I, I, I get it. I, I hear what everybody's saying. I understand what people are saying. I just, again, my concern is that we should never be in a position, and I get what, what Commissioner Hodge is saying, like if uh you need to spend more because it's more expensive. I feel like that expense needs to be then paid by your personal credit card. Like, I don't think that we should ever be in a situation of overrunning a commissioner's account. And we should never be in a situation of billing a commissioner because we should never allow more money than that account to be spent from a county card. And so maybe it's, I do think that we need added language in here. Maybe it just says like commissioners shall not exceed their yearly CTA allotment, period. And then we just, we can add if somehow through administrative, whatever, it runs over, then the commissioner is invoiced. But I, I guess like, I would like to see stronger language that is, makes it clear that these accounts are not, like, the expenses are not going to be made by the county.
Okay, um, can I go to Administrator Dill?
Chair, the Commissioners and we, after hearing this discussion, go back and, and update the language and bring it back to you guys. Is that a no, or would you like to just do it tonight?
I'd prefer just probably to get it done, but, um, Commissioner Somerville?
I'm like, if Commissioner Robbie wants to make that motion, I'll support it.
Let me, I need a second to write it down maybe, but, but I'll, I'll make the motion, I guess. It's not clear what I've, what motion I've made here, but um.
Well, you mentioned you wanted to end it.
Yes.
Like, period.
Yes, commissioners shall not exceed. Can you do like a two-minute recess?
We're not, yeah, do you, do you need a recess, or do we just need to just meditate while you're doing it?
To meditate.
Okay.
Meditation is good.
I mean, if I do a recess, it won't be two minutes. There's probably, are there, are there any other questions or concerns, maybe, why Commissioner Robbie is wordsmithing about the board rules? Commissioner Somerville?
Oh, Commissioner Robbie is working. Um, I think like the reason why I think it's important for us to do it tonight is because I don't think we should put it on staff, because like, there are rules.
Yes.
And like, we, we, like, you know, like, I don't want to push, push that on them when it's something that we need to like, decide.
I, I, one whole.
Yeah.
I want wholly.
I appreciate you guys, though.
Hardly.
I just don't want to put you in that situation.
I think that they are our board rules, and I think getting things done in the moment is probably better than pushing them off with the barrage of things coming towards us in the next few months. Uh, I could say more things about Radar.
Cleared out.
I could talk about old TV shows. Who, what characters you'd be in an old TV show? Just trying to fill the time, why Commissioner Robbie wordsmiths.
What, what character would I be in MASH? I've seen a couple of episodes. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Somerville, you actually have something on the board rules?
Actually, maybe, and this would be later, like not tonight, but there might, we may be, may, I would suggest maybe this could be a working session topic that we can work on with Commissioner Labar and our um Board Director. Um, we should consider which social media accounts we want to continue using and paying for. Um, and putting money, like, you know, like, are we still gonna pay for ads um through Meta? Um, I just, you know, we might want to adopt a policy around how we decide to use county resources on social media. And maybe we can talk about building capacity and alternative spaces that might, you know, be better, like Blue Sky or Nextdoor or Reddit. Um, just something to consider.
I think, thank you, Commissioner Somerville. I think that's a very important thing to consider ethically where we are spending our money. And balance that with the, we do want to make sure we're reaching everybody. And maybe not everybody will be off some of those social media platforms. There are people who are just gonna stay regardless.
Yeah, I hear that. Maybe there's a way for us to, but that's what I said in the future. I think it's something that we may want to consider in the future around, like, the way we engage. the way we engage, um, as the board. And if we have extra staff and then maybe in the future want to like run ads, well.
I think that's a fair point. Um, I, I will elucidate some other changes on the board rules.
Sweet.
Um, it's sweet, he says while he's writing. Um, really, the main thing is that we're gonna move up like tonight. Uh, we're gonna move up the report of the County Administrator to the, um, closer to the top of the agenda. Oftentimes our administrator has a report that he has for us, um, that we either skip or truncate because we are so tired, because we've gone so late. So hopefully this change will allow us to hear some of those things. It more in the light of day. Commissioner Somerville, something on the board rules?
Speaking of time and the light of day, I also maybe in the future, we could consider, um, ways to make county government and our board meetings more accessible by setting like parameters so that our meetings don't go until 2:00 AM. Um, I realize that we all work full-time and we like can't get here until a certain time, but I think there might be other ways that we can make our meetings run a little bit more smooth and like understand that like when everybody's sleeping and they can't watch our meeting live, um, that's not really like practicing the most like transparency. I know that they can watch them later, but um, just something to think about. Um, I personally have feelings around making decisions at, at 1:00 AM, right? And so I just, you know, not something that we can decide tonight, but maybe in the future, maybe sometime between now and next January when we adopt, re-adopt board rules.
Board rules.
But I think, you know, something to consider.
Administrator Dill?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioners, to, to that end, we have i- in my office been talking about how we manage our agendas a little bit better. Spreading out the subject matter, making sure that things that aren't time sensitive don't get crammed into an agenda. So that we're not trying to craft policy or make a major change to, uh, the county's resources, et cetera, at a late hour. So we are gonna do a better job of making sure that we manage that content.
Uh, I'm, there's some, you can see if you're watching, there's some scheming happening.
Some drafting.
Some drafting.
Definitely.
Okay. Commissioner Robbie, do you have something for us?
I do. So I would like to offer an amendment. Um, so this would go at the beginning of section four. Under item 10, Commissioner Optional Remuneration A4. Uh, so the start of that would be commissioners shall not exceed their yearly CTA. All commissioner travel shall be booked by county staff. County funds shall not be expended past each commissioner's individual CTA. In the event that funds are inadvertently spent past the commissioner's CTA, commissioners who exceed their yearly CTA will be, and then it goes into the language that's there, responsible for paying their own overruns. County administration will invoice for the amount and payment plans may be agreed upon.
Support. Okay, we have a support. Any discussion on that motion? Um, I have a question. If I don't see anybody else asking anything, does that mean so commissioners cannot book their own travel? They have to do it through the county office?
That is my intent and that's, I believe, what staff read in the language as well.
Okay. Commissioner Somerville?
Uh, discussion on the amendment. I just want to say I appreciate the work done at our meeting on the amendment.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Um, let's take a roll call vote on that amendment then. Ashlyn?
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Amendment passed.
You very much. Now we'll go back to discussion of the board rules themselves. Any more discussion on the board rules or did we beat that down in the non-recessed recessed? I don't think there's any more discussion on that. Oh, the half item. Okay, yes, Commissioner Robbie?
The half item was, and, and I just don't know the answer to this. The Materials Management Planning Committee that we just passed the bylaws for, is there a commissioner on that or no?
Yes, there is. It is Commissioner Machewski. It does not need to be reappointed right now.
That, well, the reason I ask is I did not see it and maybe I just missed it because there's a long list, but I didn't see it on the list of committees in the board rules. And I, I just want to make sure that Commissioner Machewski is getting credit for going to those meetings, but maybe I just missed it. I'm, I'm looking again.
Commissioner Machewski, you have something to say about that?
I believe it may be referred to as the Solid Waste Management Consortium. Is that true?
That's what it used to be called. I served on that for a long time, but maybe we should update the language if that's not in existence anymore.
Commissioner Labar?
Uh, forgive me, I too do not have the board portal open, but is the COC on there as, as well in the, in those enumerated committees?
I do not believe.
I'm gonna do a search. I don't see it. Community action.
Commissioner Hodge?
Uh, so there are certain committees, of course, thank you Chair, but there are certain committees like, um, COC, um, where there's specific designees for it, like for the chair. Uh, so when I was the chair, I designated Commissioner Labar as my proxy for that. And there were a number of other smaller things or certain committees that don't show up at that, that list for remuneration. Um, I don't think Ann Arbor Spark, I'd have to double check. I, I do have Board Portal open. Uh, so I could double check if Ann Arbor Spark is on or has one of them. But that is, that is another one where if it's not, uh, one of the ones that we designate our attendance to, but they designate who they're looking for from our board, then they typically don't appear in, in the board rules in that section. So that's why that's not there. I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, but that's why, or the logic behind why it's not there.
That makes sense to me. However, I do think that if Materials Management has been renamed, we should make that change in the board rule. Commissioner Robbie?
I was just gonna say the same thing. I think the Spark one makes sense to Justin's point, to Commissioner Hodge's point, because that's one that they sort of designate who's gonna be. But for one where we're designating somebody to Materials Management, I just want to make sure it's reflected and I, I don't even see the solid waste one honestly in here, but maybe I'm missing it too. Uh, Solid Waste Management Consortium. So do you, you feel like that covers it then or?
Uh, Commissioner Machewski?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I, so Materials Management Planning Committee is the new name for the current solid waste planning process. So I guess my question back is, is Solid Waste Management Consortium the old name? And so we're debating that, I guess.
It appears that for, for anybody who's watching this riveting performance at home, staff is, um, looking very diligently trying to figure out the answer to this question. Andrew Delu.
Yeah.
Deputy County Administrator.
To Commissioner Machewski's question, um, we're not able to find any current appointments to the, to the group that he mentioned, the Solid Waste Planning Consortium. Um, however, have been able to find some bylaws from 2016, uh, which talk about this group, which would make me hesitant to recommend removing it tonight without discussion with probably some folks in the Public Works Department. Um, just as an alternative though, I, I think, uh, you know, we're working with, uh, Chair Emeritus, uh, Hodge on, on those, on those series of changes, um, in the past, that, the intent was that they were exhaustive. Um, and I would say it would, you know, I think from a staff perspective, it would make sense to at least add the Materials Management, uh, Planning Group, uh, to the list.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Unless Commissioner Hodge was gonna say something in contradiction, I, I would like to move the addition of that.
Support. I was just gonna move it, so.
Uh, I, I was also gonna say though that, um, well, I guess.
That's the motion.
It's the motion. I, I've made the motion, it's been seconded.
Yeah.
If I could discuss.
You may discuss the motion.
I, so I served on the Solid Waste Management Consortium. I think that's what it was called. Commissioner Machewski, did you ever serve on that or was that, okay, so I served on it. It was, it was basically like an informal group of people that got together. It wasn't informal, I guess, but it was, it was a group of people that got together to talk about waste management in the county and it was like Trinity Health had a person there and, you know, Worma had a person, everybody had a person there. And, uh, but so I don't, I think that they went away. Like I think that that group stopped meeting as far as, as far as I can tell, but because it was actually born out of the land. It was like they helped to shape how the landfill revenue was being spent in terms of the solid waste programming and like the pickup stuff, but. Andrews.
Yeah, Deputy County Administrator Delu.
Trying to follow. Uh, I, there, there's another group as well, the Plan Implementation Advisory Committee, uh, was a, a prior iteration, which I, I don't believe is listed here anymore, but I think which is closer in terms of the work of the Materials Management Planning. My, my concern with the, the bylaws of this other consortium group is it looks to be more of a participatory group, uh, where municipalities or other, other, uh, agencies could join, um, on a voluntary basis. And so my, my concern there is just um, maybe not like a one-for-one replacement with this new body.
So you're saying leave solid waste management?
I think that, yeah, the, so your motion is adding Materials Management, which I think we should do, but I would not take out Solid Waste Management Consortium at this time until we allow staff to find out more information. That's a pretty pro forma change if we needed to come back to us. Uh, Administrator Dill?
Yeah, gonna suggest something similar to that. Theo was on the call earlier. He jumped off. Uh, we will, first thing tomorrow, we will wrap back around to him and make sure that, uh, any, this change works for him and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you Chair for, uh, any modification if it's needed.
That sounds great. This does not sound like something that's gonna drive business to a halt. So I think we're probably, any other, uh, comments or questions on the motion? Okay, so let's take a roll call on that motion. Ashlyn?
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville? Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed.
Did I vote? I, did I?
I think so.
Oh, God. Oh, my Lord. Okay, okay. Yes, I voted yes. All right. Any other questions on the board? Rules, questions, concerns, comments, any other quarter? Questions? Now you had a half, now you have got a quarter. Okay. Commissioner Robbie?
It's gonna become a full question here, but the, the, to the Commissioner Labar's point about the continuing of care board.
Yes.
I didn't see it in here either and I'm, was that? Sparks not there either.
That's what, I think that's one of the boards that we were talking about that's the board chair, that they designate that the, that somebody from our board is on it. We don't really have a.
Okay.
We don't really have a say. Any other questions? Eighth of questions? Okay. All right, uh, now let's take a roll call vote on the board rules. Ashlyn?
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Ben?
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Somerville? Motion passed.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and that's the end of all the business that we have. Um, the next item on the agenda is the report from the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I'm not really gonna have a report for you here. I'm just gonna say that this week, um, I think shocked us, a lot of us with the things coming out of, um, of Washington DC with a slew of executive orders. Um, I sent a, a text message to my mom and dad with a picture of, um, I'm gonna cry a little bit maybe, with a picture of Lyndon Johnson, and his 1965 order banning discrimination in federal hiring that was revoked. I think that's a telling fact along with all of the other things that happened this week. Um, including the first woman leader of any of the armed forces being removed from her job as well. That we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a time. And when I sent that to my dad, he wrote back to me during this meeting and said that, you know, he's concerned about things going forward. And I think that his point he makes is good for us all to hear that. He said, we need to stress how much we share and not how different we are. And I think that's like, what we share as a community is really important to me. And what we share here at the board table is really important to me. And I can think of no better group of people I want to be in this with for the next four years than the people sitting around this table and the people in this room right now. Um, you, you've all shown your dedication to the work that we do and to having difficult discussions. I am crying. Um, and having difficult discussions together and coming to solutions and being creative. And I think we just need to make sure we keep that in mind about the things that we share, what we want for this community and that we just are gonna make sure we're coming together to continue to have those conversations. So thank you all for being who you are and thank you for being in this room. I'm gonna stop crying. And we have, um, any items for current or future discussion? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Well, thank you for the comments that you just made during your report. I, I think we have to have a, a lot of moments like that and a lot of conversation about that. So I have an interesting item for current, uh, and future discussion to, to share. Uh, so the sheriff invited me and, uh, some of her deputies to join the Sheriff of Genesee County, uh, to participate in a operations briefing around some of the work that they do around preventing human trafficking. Um, it's called, you may have seen some of the billboards. Or if you follow Chris Hansen, people know, catch a predator, people know, okay, and Chris Hansen has a show called, yes, so he has a show called Take Down with Chris Hansen, uh, and on the show, he has his own streaming service now. You can watch some of the episodes on YouTube. Uh, Chris Hansen frequently partners with the Genesee County Sheriff, Chris Swanson, on, uh, the predator investigations to, uh, catch child predators. Uh, they started off just trying to catch the ones in Genesee County. Um, they found that they were catching a number of people outside of Genesee County, people that were traveling there. You may have seen the news around the EMU professor that was caught in a sting operation uh, in Genesee County. Um, they have expanded their, that work, um, I think it to more than 60 Michigan counties at this point. And they've done at least one operation there. Uh, so the sheriff here is interested in bringing that program here to be able to catch, I mean, we had an EMU professor traveling to Genesee County. We know that there's certainly gonna be other people that would get caught, uh, here. So participated in the operations briefing around that and then we, um, she left a couple of deputies there to participate in the sting operation that occurred that night. And we're gonna have additional conversations about planning one here with the support of, um, the Ghost Task Force, uh, there and then potentially further conversations about how might we make that something that happens more regularly. Uh, it's a, it's a very good operation and they, they are, one of the things that I learned while there, and you, you get a sense of this if you ever watched the show. The deputies that are engaged in the texting of the, um, uh, potential predators are texting hundreds of people at a time. And, you know, you can see the people in the room. We were told during the operations briefing that we could ask any, anyone that participates any questions that we had, but if you see the texters texting, just let them text. So come, because they need to do that. So there's, I'm sure a significant need here for that as well. So more information on that to come. Or happy to answer questions about it. But yes, I did get to meet Chris Hansen.
Administrator Dill, do you have a point on this? Because Commissioner Somerville has a.
Really quick, listen, uh, you know, I, and I, I always have to be careful when we talk about uh, the operation of the organization and not inserting myself in the wrong way. But if this program process serv-, uh, service, whatever we're calling it, is gonna create additional risk for the organization, I would like for my office to be engaged in that discussion. So I will share my concerns with the sheriff at another time, but I just want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to manage risk for this organization, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is for current and future discussion. Uh, I just want to start by thanking, uh, the county admin team, um, as well as REO staff, so our new director, Derek Jackson, um, along with Akeem, Victoria and Kyra. For folks who don't know, Victoria and Kyra operate the, um, RV, the mobile, mobile support services. Um, we've been using it quite a bit in my district because there has been a crisis unfolding since January with a multi-unit apartment complex and, um, the county like has been critical in helping get information out to. to tenants who are currently impacted by poor um landlords, but also impacted by uh you know, like decisions that like are out of our control in terms of um future displacement of individuals who live at this multi-unit complex. Um and so I just wanted to appreciate them because we've been able to reach a lot of folks who have like so many questions and nobody communicating with them. And the reason why we're able to do that is because of the RV and the staff that actually drive it there, because I could not drive that. Um and so I just wanted to uplift that. And then I also just wanted to share that this is going on because um while this has, this kind of was alerted to me in December, early December, um there's not really like a good way to like know how we can react or respond in a situation like this. And I really hope that it doesn't happen in anybody else's district because it's like impossible to figure out how uh hundreds of people could potentially become homeless and over 400 units that are somewhat affordable that a lot of voucher holders use um that would be offline in Washtenaw County and specifically in Ypsilanti. And so I just wanted to flag that, like I'm taking notes. Staff are doing a great job just to kind of use as a blueprint um for something like this in other parts of the county. Um obviously, like, we have limited capacity in terms of some of the long-term effects that this situation might have. But we are able to react in the short term and be a resource um to folks. And the only reason why we can do that in the middle of the winter when it's freezing out is because we have the mobile um support services. So I just wanted to thank the team um both from um just admin generally and then also REO. Um and all the service providers who are helping too, like legal services and Jewish family services and the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, um Washtenaw Housing Alliance. A lot of folks are trying to help mitigate harm um in a very unfortunate situation, so.
Thank you, Commissioners Somerville. Um and uh let me just say thank you for your tireless work on this too. You're doing a yeoman's job um trying to get things together and work on helping people and really illustrating the definition of a public servant. So um I am impressed. Thank you. Commissioner LaBar?
Thanks, Chair. Um I just wanted to flag it, you know, obviously uh we are three days into Trump 2.0, and so far, I think uh his his conduct is is sort of matching unfortunate expectations. One of the biggest things that we have seen in terms of rhetoric is related to immigration. And I think it's easy to uh get wrapped up in uh federal action on that in in largely a law enforcement context. But um through executive order, they have basically halted uh any cer- any uh family members of folks who helped us in Afghanistan, their ability to come and reunite with their families here. Um they have injected ambiguity and uncertainty into the immigration status of thousands of people in this country. And I flagged this here just because um as I think we all know, that's gonna draw on human services that exist out there already in our community. Um those individuals that they help currently are are gonna need more help across the board. And so I hope we will keep that in mind uh just in terms of what we do with our own in-house operations and in our funding decisions. And mainly in the context that I I think for the next year, flexibility is the key asset that this board can possess. And um I don't know what that looks like. I share your thinking, Chair, that uh I I'm I'm fortunate to have two years' experience serving with all of you now uh to to have uh you know, a better understanding. But I do think um we will need to give each other uh the ability to be flexible, to meet emergent needs, and very candidly uh to do so probably in ways that are uh unique or or certainly uh infrequent in 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 past endeavors. So um I I say that, thank you for hearing me, and uh let's let's hope uh for the best.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Robbie?
I, since we got a vibe going, I kind of want to build off the vibe a little bit. Um so I started in politics in under Obama, and then uh I was a county commissioner under Obama, and uh then when I ran for state rep, that was the same year that Trump won his first election. And uh as as a new state representative, 2017, I remember the public response to Donald Trump being very different from the response that we have today. And but what I really want to talk about with my comments briefly here is it it's not so much because I kind of get it, like I kind of feel the same way. I'm pretty exhausted, honestly. Like, and I think that everybody is kind of just feeling exhausted. People are not like down with what Donald Trump's doing, but we're just like tired of having to deal with it, honestly, and just kind of disgusted that it's now round two, and here we are.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I get it because I kind of feel the same way. But I think there's a difference between that and some of the things that I'm seeing uh with members of my own party. Uh not going sort of beyond the um like being tired and apathetic, but being sort of like actively okay with what's going on uh and supportive in some cases uh based on some votes that we've seen recently in Congress. Uh some members of our our own party have actually supported things that uh that are on the president's platform. And uh I just, you know, I I understand that Republicans are going to support Donald Trump. I don't like it. Uh I think they should be better and push back against his agenda, but I get it. Uh it's when I see m- members of my own party that are um not only not standing up to and actively being vocal against, but also sort of being buying into the rhetoric and the policy platforms uh and participating in uh ego stroking and things like that that I really am quite disgusted by. And I would just, if this isn't speaking to anybody, obviously, in this room uh or any of our colleagues, um this this is directed at folks that are not in county government. Um but it's a concern and a growing concern and something that really has shocked me uh as this new administration has begun. And so I wanted to just take a moment to say how disappointing it has been to see that uh and the series of actions that have taken place um since the election, but especially since the inauguration uh that have only supported and lent oxygen to uh a a tyrant uh who is a fascist. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Beeman?
I just wanted to shift the tone slightly. Um bring us back to a happy place where we do celebrate all. So we won't be in session next week, but I wanted to wish a happy Lunar New Year to you all who celebrate next Wednesday.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbie?
Is that Commissioner Somerville's birthday?
Yeah.
So I, yep.
Happy birthday, Commissioner Somerville.
Happy birthday, Commissioner Somerville. Yeah, another year older, another year around. Any other comments for um? Trust me, I'm there. Any other comments for items for future discussion? There are no pending items. Always an order, non-debatable. All those in favor? Okay, item.